The following meeting will be conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bayer Open Public Meetings Act, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. Bill A three eight five zero slash S S two two nine four, signed by the governor, allows public bodies to conduct meetings and provide notice by electronic means during periods of emergency in response to Executive Order one oh three and one oh seven, declaring a public health emergency and a state emergency, and directing residents to quarantine and practice social distancing. Any questions may be directed to the zoning board secretary during business hours at seven three two five zero two five seven zero eight, or via email at Michelle dot Alonso at cityofAsburyPark dot com. Virtual meeting access, participation, instructions. The City of Asbury Park Zoning Board is utilizing a Zoom meeting program to conduct regular meetings in compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Do I need to run through all of this information?
No.
Okay. What is the next vital piece of information?
Okay, I think we're done there. The call to order, public meeting statement, and let's do a roll call, which I'll take care of. Please unmute, everyone, please unmute yourselves. Daniel Harris. Brittany Ashman. Christopher Gonzalez. Absent. Jill Potter. Tim Slick. Catherine Minavini. Bonnie Nah. Russell Lewis. Christopher Avalon. Christopher is absent this evening. Okay, we we have seven members, so we certainly do have a quorum. We can proceed.
Great. The first matter up is, I believe, thirteen oh two Madison, which does need to be carried from today's meeting to, what is the date that's going to be carried to?
The December meeting date. I'm not sure what that is. Anyone know that offhand? Let me see.
Yes, hold on. I think I have information from across on a text.
The December meeting is December the eighth.
Yes, that's what I had.
Okay, so if I may, I did some background on this. I can help you out with it. Okay. We spoke, I spoke to the applicant's attorney, advised him, the application's been around for quite some time. That would be necessary for him to renotice and also acquire new list of property owners from the tax assessor, because I'm sure his is dated beyond three or four months at least. So even what we're going to do is we'll carry this to the December eighth meeting, and the applicant is in fact required to get a new property owner's list from the tax assessor of all properties within 200 feet of the subject property, as well as renotice in either the Coaster or the Asbury Park Press.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to move thirteen oh two Madison LLC with proper notices to the December eighth zoning board meeting.
I second.
The second is Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Okay, Daniel Harris. Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Gonzalez is absent. Jill Potter?
I'm here.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Catherine Minavini?
Yes.
Bonnie Nah?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez is here.
Seven. Okay, for the record, Christopher Gonzalez is now in attendance. Thank you, Christopher.
Welcome.
Okay, so that will be carried to that date. I mean, that was the thirteen oh two Madison. Okay, great.
All right, then we'll move on to our next and only application for this evening, which is nine hundred Cookman LLC, which is at nine ten Cookman Avenue, block seven oh four, lot three, zoning district R three, for subdivision. So.
Okay, for that, Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the submissions, the notices. The notices are in proper form, notices published properly within the Asbury Park Press on October tenth, excuse me, on October sixth, two thousand as well as service on the property owners affected within 200 feet. And we have jurisdiction to proceed. I just want to ask AP TV if the members of the public have access. Can they hear us? Are they in?
Yes, yeah, it looks like we have two attendees so far.
Okay, alrighty. Mr. Caris, I assume, Mr. Chairman, you want him to proceed?
I certainly do. Mr. Caris?
Thank you, Andrew Caris, on behalf of the applicant. What I'll do is I'll give a brief introduction as to the nature of the application, and then I'll be calling two witnesses to testify during the course of the application. My witnesses will be Jeff Jordan, our architect, and Bruce Jacobs, who's an engineer, and also I'm going to qualify him as a planner. As indicated, the property is located at nine hundred Cookman Ave, block seven oh four, lot three. It's in the R three zone, which is a medium density zone here in Asbury Park. Presently existing on the site is a single family residential dwelling. Importantly, it is off to one side. It's located approximately seven feet from the adjoining residence to the east. The lot size is eighty seven hundred square feet. The proposal for which we're here tonight is to subdivide the lot into two lots, forty two hundred square feet and forty five hundred square feet in order to construct two two-family residential dwellings. Two-family residential dwellings are permitted in the R three zone. Each unit that of the two family houses that are being proposed will be approximately twelve hundred square feet. Each one will be a two-bedroom residence. Since what's important to know is since the lot does not meet the 10,000 square foot minimum lot area in R three zone, the R two bulk variance standards are applied pursuant to thirty days sixty seven D of the zoning ordinances. Now, in addition to the subdivision, there are a number of variances that are being requested. One in particular is lot size. What is required is twenty five hundred square feet per unit. We are shy of that, so proposed lot three oh one will have, or we are proposing twenty one hundred square feet per unit. Proposed lot three oh two is going to be two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet per unit, so we'll need to see variance for that. In addition, we're going to seek a variance for lot width. The requirement is a fifty-foot minimum on proposed lot three oh one. We do have the width of fifty feet. You're short on lot three oh two. We're seeking a variance to allow for forty-five feet lot width. The front yard setback, although it is required at twenty-five feet, and what is being proposed is fifteen feet, because we are consistent with the prevailing setbacks within the block, our position is that under section thirty dash sixty-eight point two of the ordinances, a variance is not required for the front yard setback. Building coverage is another variance. We'll be looking for a twenty-five percent max is allowed. We're requesting thirty-four percent on lot three oh one and lot three oh two, thirty-one point seven three percent. Lastly, FAR zero point five is the max. We are looking for, our calculations reflect that'll be zero point six one, just above what the allowed allowable maximum is on three point oh one that lot. The other lot three point oh two will be zero point five seven. And with that being said, I'll get right to the application in terms of presenting it. Our first witness is going to be Jeff Jordan. We can have him sworn in?
Yes. Jordan, good evening. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and Mr. Caris will take it from there. But before Mr. Caris jumps in, I want to swear in when we're done with Mr. Jordan, let's swear in Donna and Jason.
Sure, so my name is spelled, it's Jeff Jordan, spelled J E F F, J O R D A N.
Okay, great. Donna and Jason, please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear testimony about to given this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitcher, board engineer.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Caris, proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications as an architect?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Science in Architecture from the University of Michigan, Master of Architecture degree from the University of California, Berkeley. I've been practicing for approximately twenty years, ten years with my own practice. I am licensed and registered in five states, including New Jersey.
Okay, thank you very much.
I may offer him as an expert in architecture?
We accept, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, you're familiar with the property at issue in this particular matter, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What I'd like to do is go through with you the plans, but initially, what I'd like to do, if we could bring up the aerial photo that's been identified as A one.
Is that, is that my job to do?
Do you have that with you?
Sure, give me one moment, please. Is this what you're referring to?
There was an aerial.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have an aerial. I have the site plan.
Okay, what, let's do this. Let's go back then to the first page of your plans. All right. All right, and then what we'll do is, let's identify the, your plan. It's A one for identification, am I correct? I'm sorry, A five for identification, correct? This plan?
This plan is A zero zero.
No, no, the, I wanted, what I wanted to do, it's exhibit A five, am I correct, up on top?
Correct.
And the last revision date that we have for this is May twenty seventh to two thousand twenty, am I correct?
Correct.
And when we look at the front page of the plan, there is a photo of the existing building, am I correct?
That is right.
Okay, why don't you describe where that is situated on the site and where it is in proximity to the other residence to its left?
Sure, I'm going to zoom in on that. Can you guys see that? So this is the subject building that we're proposing demolition of. These are the two neighboring buildings that will remain.
All right, and what is being proposed is to erect two two-family houses, am I correct?
That is correct.
And the houses, the rendering of those houses are in the proposed facade that we see there, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, in terms of architectural style, can you describe what kind of architectural style you utilize in coming up with this?
Sure, yes, our interest in this case was to do something that was a bit more of a modern interpretation of the houses around it. You know, the houses, the neighboring houses, both have a lot of architectural character, but they're from a different period, so we're looking to do something that was, you know, drew some inspiration from these houses, but was of this time in this period. And so what we've done to pick up on some of the the details, there's, the houses that we're proposing are, first of all, you'll see the massing, the size of the houses is similar. They're two-story homes, like the existing houses on the site. They have hip roofs, similar to the existing houses on the site, and they have pronounced front porches. The other thing that we've done, and maybe I'll take you to a different image, if that's all right. Another thing we are doing to
Let's identify the page, so this is
Sure, this is page A two hundred?
Okay, go ahead.
These are the elevations. Another thing we're doing is we're using a horizontal lap siding. In this case, it's fiber cement, whereas the original house is likely, or the neighboring house is likely have wood. The windows have a trim around them. There's a bit of an articulation up at the top of the wall with a trim panel, freeze panel. The, in the, in our case, the porch will have metal columns and a metal guardrail and not wood columns and wood guardrail like the existing homes on the site. So it's a bit more modern, a bit leaner in appearance than what's there presently. And then the idea with the windows is that they're similar to the neighboring homes, sort of double windows in the case of the pink house here. But unlike the existing homes, we're proposing casement windows, again, a more modern interpretation on what are currently double or double hung windows.
Okay, what I'd like to do is go to the second page of what's been marked as A five for identification, which is page A zero one zero of your plans. All right, what I'd like you to do is go through where the houses are positioned on site as reflected to the left there.
So you can see, here's the outline of the existing home on the site, and I'm tracing it here with this hand. And then here are the two proposed houses. So one is, is actually, I think, five feet to the side of the existing home, and then there's, the second house is built over here. I should say they are mirror images of each other over a driveway that's in between the two. As Andrew mentioned, we are maintaining the prevailing front yard setback, so the existing house, neighboring home here has the front of the house in this location, and we are similarly located, and then there's a front porch beyond that. As I mentioned, there's going to be a new concrete driveway between the two homes and walks and stairs up to the front porches in both cases.
Now, with the house that is to the east, we've created more space from where the existing home is to where the proposed home is, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and do you have that computation? How much additional space?
I believe we've added five feet from what is presently there. Five feet of separation, I should say.
And when we continue with the plans, I want to go now to A one hundred, the next page. That is the interior layout. We're not going to go into a lot of detail, but that shows that each unit, am I correct, is a two-bedroom unit?
That is correct. Two bedrooms, two bathrooms, each on its own floor, so they're flats. And we'll point out they both have a front door accessible off the front porch. So in the case of the lower units to the right, and the upper unit comes to the left and goes up a stair. The layouts are identical with the exception of the entry location.
And the square footage for each unit?
Twelve hundred square feet per unit.
So there would be twenty four hundred square feet of living space in each building, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If we continue on with the plans, what I want to do is go to, we already went to A two hundred, if we can go to A three hundred on your plans, it shows an attic area, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, is that attic for occupancy, or is that attic limited for utilities?
That attic is solely for utility use, so the idea is to put the mechanical equipment and ductwork up there. That'll serve the upper unit. The lower unit would be served by similar equipment in the crawl space. The attic space, there's no stair. There'd simply be a hatch to get up to access the equipment. The ceiling height is quite limited, but we did pitch the roof enough to make it similar to the adjacent buildings in terms of the roof pitch, so that's how we picked up that space for the mechanical equipment.
Okay, did you do the computation for the FAR? Did the engineer do that?
I think we both did it.
And what did you come out with?
I don't have that number offhand. I know we were slightly over. I think we sent you that information. Do you have it, Andrew?
If I was to say that the three point oh one comes out to zero point six one, does that sound correct?
That does sound correct.
And zero point five seven and three point oh two?
That's right.
And is that because in the attic, the ordinance provides that you only count what is above seven feet from the, in terms of height?
That's right. I believe we counted for another hundred and seventy or hundred and ninety square feet in the attic. That's the area of the attic that actually has seven feet of height. As you can see in this drawing, the rest of the attic is actually, you know, under the pitched roof there, so it's not accessible per that ordinance.
And you're based upon the definition of gross floor area in the zoning code, which excludes any space where the floor to ceiling is less than, less than seven feet, am I correct?
Correct.
In terms of refuse and garbage, have you made accommodations for that within your design?
We have. If I could go back to the site plan, what we are proposing is that the rear of the houses, the lower units will both have their own rear entrance as well with a small stair. Adjacent to those stairs, we're proposing space for two cans adjacent to the two condensers for the mechanical equipment for each unit. That would happen for both buildings, so each unit would have its own can.
Okay, and you reflect a parking area in the back of those units, am I correct?
That is correct.
And where is the parking that's shown on your plans?
So the parking, there are four spaces across the back here and two additional spaces here. As you can see, the lot line comes through here, so this space would actually belong to nine twelve Cookman along with these two. These three spaces would belong to nine ten Cookman.
And it would be a shared driveway between the two residents?
That is correct.
Have you taken into account lighting for the residents, where the residences?
Yes, we have. So we are proposing lights below the ceiling of the front porches. Let me go back to the elevation drawings, if I may. So in the front elevation, there would be lights mounted on the underside of the porch overhang there. Additionally, along the driveway, we're proposing a couple floodlights, downlights to illuminate the driveway and walkway back and forth there. And then finally, we have a light in the rear of the building at the rear entrance for the lower unit.
Would any of the lighting that you're proposing spill out onto any adjacent properties?
I don't believe so. These are, the lights on the front and the rear of the building are meant to be downlights. The lights on the driveway, which is between these two buildings, would again be downlights, but they would be pointed at the driveway, and so that would be shared between those two buildings.
All right, have you had a chance to review the report, so prepare both the planning report and also the engineering report?
Yes, I have.
Okay, what I want to do is just hit a few points. Most of it I'll go over with our engineer in this matter, but just a few points. We've already gone through, if we go to page three of the report, the prevailing distance of the adjacent housing, which is
Which report you're referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm making reference right now to the planning report dated October twenty one, two thousand twenty by Clark Catan and hence.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right. If we can go to page three of that report, Jeff, the first thing that I want to hit upon is the minimum front yard setback, and it does mention in there that if we are with the prevailing setback of the adjacent properties or within the neighborhood, then it does not require a front yard variance, am I correct?
That is correct.
And based upon the way you designed the building and the immediate property to the left, you are prevailing with that, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. There are comments in here with regard to fencing that we find on page six. I can go through that with the engineer, but you are familiar with the fencing that is being proposed, am I correct?
Yes, I believe we're proposing wood fence in the rear.
As opposed to vinyl fence, am I correct?
Correct.
All right. There is mention of architectural design on page six of the report, and it first discusses building separation, and we're seeking an exemption with regard to the separation of the buildings, am I correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and there is comment with regard to massing and ornamentation that makes reference to section thirty dash sixty-nine of the code, am I correct?
Correct.
Your understanding of the code, though, thirty dash sixty-nine is not applicable to the R three zone. Rather, it is applicable to the R one, R two, R one A and PO residential districts, am I correct?
That is correct, as well as districts that have been deemed historic previously.
And you're not aware if this one has been, you're not aware that this one has been deemed historic, am I correct?
Correct.
But irrespective, what you did try to do is make, take a modern design of what you do find in this neighborhood with the, in a sense, the Victorian buildings, am I correct?
That is right. We were trying to be respectful of the context within which we were working, while also proposing something that was more modern and of its time.
All right. We've gone through the attic. All right, what I'm going to do is now take a look at the insight report that is dated October sixteen, two thousand twenty. And I think I've hit all the points on that. It's all engineering. That's all the questions I have for this witness.
Thank you. I will stop the screen share unless there are any other questions.
Why don't we hold it up there? There may be questions from the board or people in the audience.
Hi, Mr. Jordan, this is Russell Lewis, acting chair this evening. How are you?
I'm well, Mr. Lewis, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. I'll start this off. Can you just verify the depth of the front porch for me, please?
You're putting me on the spot, Mr. Lewis. Let me see what I can do here. All right, so we're showing seven and a half feet.
Okay. And it looks like that's a flat roof. That's a modern take, I take it, right?
It's, yeah, it's as flat as it can be. It will, you know, of course, have some pitch to it for drainage, but it'll appear flat from the street.
And what is the material that's on top of that?
It'll be a membrane, a single ply membrane, like a rubber membrane.
Rubber membrane, okay.
Yeah.
And it's your testimony and your belief that if the prevailing setbacks of the neighboring properties are at a certain distance that don't meet our zoning setbacks, that you do not need to ask for a variance for that?
That is my understanding.
Okay, I'd like to get that verified, but
Mr. Lewis, that's section thirty dash sixty-eight point two G of your zoning code. And it's reflected in the planning report also.
Donna, can you, yeah, that's, that's all true?
This is Donna. So, yeah. It would be helpful, we're going from aerial photographs. It would have been helpful to get testimony of the actual distance of the existing buildings setbacks compared to what the applicant is proposing. But the code does allow for new construction to be aligned with the existing front facades of existing buildings.
Great. Mr. Jordan, do you happen to have the information about the existing building setback?
I believe, and I don't want to misquote her, I know the engineer has actually gone out and measured it himself, and so maybe perhaps he can add that testimony.
Okay. The only other question I have, and maybe you're not the right person to ask this, but it's my understanding from a previous application that came before the zoning board years ago, that the property to the east, which I believe is nine hundred Cookman, so I'm talking about, yes, between nine, yes, between nine ten and nine hundred, that that was and still is a shared driveway. And I, my question is, will that shared driveway use be abandoned in this new proposal? And will, if so, will the deeds reflect that?
Yeah, I'm probably not the person to answer that.
Well, we'll have engineer test, but there is an easement that's going to be provided.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Do any other board members have any questions at this time for Mr. Jordan?
Yes, I do. This is Brittany Ashman. I want to question why the ordinance thirty dash fifty-six dash I does not apply to this, this application?
Which ordinance is it?
That is the, it's the architecture design.
It does. We're, we're seeking an exception with regard to that.
I thought you said that, that architect testified that he didn't believe that R two design architecture applied to this site.
No, no, that's separate and apart. Section thirty dash sixty-nine is the design, community design elements. Section thirty dash fifty-six is a different part of the code.
Okay. Then why did you not try to design this to reflect the nearby? I mean, I know you took elements of it, but, I mean
We're not, we're not required to, because in our, the way we read the code, the community design elements of thirty dash sixty-nine apply to the low-density residential districts, which is the R one, the R one A, as I indicated, the PO. And I believe the R two.
Um, can I get
It doesn't apply to the R three.
Can I get Jack or Donna to confirm that?
That would be Donna.
Hi, Donna. So the way the code is currently written, Mr. Caris is technically correct. It says that unless it's a designated residential historic district or an R one, R two, or PO district, these standards for community design regulations apply. There's, you know, more to it than that, but that's kind of the core requirement. The board has in the past held those requirements, because City Historian has pressed in the past for an understanding that all residential districts are to be understood as historic districts, and that And that we're using the R2 standards. You know, it directs you to use the R2 standards for this development, even though you're in the R3. You're not doing multifamily development, so you're doing R2. So then it would be, the R2 standards would apply. So there's two ways of looking at it. So we chose to apply the R2 standards and treat it as though it's an R2 zone in design regulations.
Remind me again, I know this is in your report. It is R3, but why are R2?
So the R3 district says, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you can do multifamily development, so three, four, however many units with medium density, up to, I think it's 50 dwelling units per acre. But if you have a less than 10,000 square foot lot, you can use your R1 or R2 zoning district standards for single or two-family development. So since their property is 8,700 square feet, they've chosen to develop as two-family dwellings and use the R2 standards.
Okay, thank you.
It's the R2 bulk standards that I believe it makes reference to. That are to be applied.
Okay, my second question, thank you, Donna. Why is there not a window above the second door? And I looked at the floor plan and there's not, it's not a bathroom or anything.
Yeah, we looked at having a window there and it seemed like a not spot. You know, the window here, sorry, can you see this all right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So these windows are, you know, more or less centered in this room. The window that you're seeing in the elevation is centered on the stair. To add another window adjacent to it felt like it would be strange in that room. And so that's one of those areas where we felt like a sort of more quote-unquote "modern" interpretation of how that would be done is appropriate. So there was a window there at one point. It seemed a little bit strange in the interior of the space, and so we took it away. The other thing I'll point out is that the, if I could go back to this house, you know, you'll see double windows on each side with a single window in the middle. That would have been great in our case too. However, we again have the situation where the window would have been in a strange location relative to the stair. So to us, it felt more appropriate to align the window with the stair, align these windows with this room, and then try and resolve it on the outside with a panel of a contrasting color.
Okay, thank you. Do you think there's a way to take this a step further and still have that modern take, but maybe make it blend in with the block a little bit more? Like, did you try that?
Well, you know, we did try the, you know, the hip roof again, the siding style, the double windows, the front porch.
Well, the roof isn't, no, there's no dormer and it's not pitched.
The roof is pitched.
No, I'm good.
Oh, the front, the porch roof? Yeah. So the, the reason we don't have a dormer is because we don't have occupied space there. To me, it felt like it would be strange to have a window and a dormer for the HVAC unit. And then the roof here was not pitched, again, just to have a kind of a cleaner line, a more modern looking roof. You know, I, I think it's appropriate, given the houses around it. I don't think it'll stand out in a negative way. I think it'll actually be a nice, modern reinterpretation. We do, I will add, we do do a lot of work in actually designated historic districts. And the guidance we've always received has been that buildings need to be of their time, of their period. Even the National Park, the Department of Interior Standards referenced that new buildings or significant additions to historic buildings should be a product of their time and not be, you know, essentially not mimic the buildings around them because it causes confusion about the period of the buildings. So we're trying to be respectful. You know, I mentioned the scale, massing of the buildings, you know, similar looking materials, you know, a pitched roof as a primary roof instead of a flat roof. You know, front porch, these types of things. So we're trying to do that again in a more modern way, while being respectful of, of the neighbors. But what we don't want to do is make a building, you know, that's built in 2020, that looks like a building from 100 years prior, or is identical, I should say, to a building that's 100 years older.
Yes, I understand. Did you try and make the buildings like thinner, I guess, not as wide? To get in that, under that FAR? Because it seems like there's a lot of space there. I don't know, like, is that the only layout that you played with?
We, we actually looked at quite a few layouts. And, you know, to get a two-bedroom, two-bathroom flat on this lot, had we made it narrower, you know, you can see already the bedrooms are, you know, 10 by 10 and a half feet. That's not, you know, that's a modest sized bedroom. The living room is only 14 feet, four inches wide. So to make the, these buildings even narrower would have been, you know, architecturally, I think it would have been quite challenging for those units to feel comfortable. As it is, they're snug, I think. But I think we've done a pretty good job by opening this up to make the space a little bit more generous and feel a little bit bigger than it actually is.
Jeff, again, what, the size of the units are, how many square feet?
They're 1,200 square feet. And that includes the stairs and everything. So that's, you know, they're 1,200 square feet is the actual, you know, gross square footage of this footprint.
So you're saying that you have tried alternative layouts, but that was the widest you could make it to make the space work?
Those are narrowest we could make it.
Or narrowest, I mean, yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, what if you put another window in there? Wouldn't that open it up? And then you can make it a little smaller?
I'm sorry, put a window where?
Where I asked previously.
Oh, in the, in the front there? Yeah, I, I'll defer to our clients. And Andrew, I don't know if, if it's appropriate to kind of make design changes in this context, but let me know. I mean, obviously, we're, we're able to make changes. I just don't know it's appropriate to agree to in this format.
Yeah, and we've come up with this design. You, you can't go, 1,200 square feet is not a, by far, it's not a huge two-bedrooms, somewhat modest. And I think the design that is being presented works for these, these two lots that are being proposed, and I think works within the neighborhood.
Well, isn't that for us to decide?
I, I know, I'm just offering.
Okay, because it kind of seems like you're designing this for the tenants, not so much for the neighborhood, but that's what I'm trying to see if there's a compromise. Anyways, my next question, the trash cans in the back. Can you go back to that?
Yeah, so you're there. So the trash cans are to either side of, this would be a small landing and stair from the rear of the unit. And then the trash cans would be adjacent to that, accessible from the driveway. So.
So that's one trash can per unit. Where is the recycling?
Sorry, it's a trash can and a recycling can. So these would be, you know, the large rolling cans.
So that's one trash can per building and one recycling can per building?
Yep, yep.
So you testified that each unit has its own trash can. That's incorrect then, right?
Sorry, yeah, that was incorrect. Each, there's a unit, sorry, there's a trash can and a recycling can for the building, not for the unit.
And is that sufficient in your opinion as an architect?
I think so. These are two-bedroom units. I think, you know, you're probably, in reality, there's going to be two, two, maybe three people living in these units. So, you know, a similarly sized house would certainly have a similar setup.
Wouldn't there be four people if it's two units each?
That's what I mean. Yep, sorry, per unit. So I think four people serving one can. I can tell you anecdotally, my own family, we have five of us in a house that's 2,300 square feet. And we have one large can and for recycling, one for trash, and that works perfectly well. So the thinking is that that should be sufficient in this case, given that these are two, two-bedroom units.
Okay, and did you propose any kind of fence around that?
I think the engineer will speak a bit more about the fencing. My understanding is that the fencing will be in the background.
Around the recycling and the trash.
Oh, no, we haven't proposed that. I'm sure, you know, our clients would be open to that if that's.
Yeah, we're not, we're not opposed. After the board's recommendation, we'd be okay with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
I have a couple. Oh, go ahead. So, Mr. Jordan, this is Catherine Minervini. I'm, I'm going to go backwards on my questions. My internet cut out for a couple of seconds when you guys were talking about recycling and trash. I disagree with you. I think that you need one trash can and one recycling bin per unit. I live in 1,050 square feet, just two of us, and we fill both of those for every pickup. I also live in an area where there are a lot of rentals. And so I see all the trash on the alley and what gets filled based on which. So I, I, I agree with Brittany on, there needs to be more, there needs to be at least one and one per unit.
There'd be no objection to that. We could do that.
Yeah, we can, we can link that up. I think we have space back here to incorporate those.
Yeah, we could do that.
I'm just telling you from my own experience. On lighting in the driveway area, those on the side elevation, are those censored or are those on all the time? I'm just curious.
Those would be on sensors, is what we were thinking. And so the idea is that as someone either drives in or parks their car and is walking back, there'll be light for them.
I tend to disagree with Brittany on the interior. As an interior designer, I much appreciate a little extra space. I also like a lot of windows, but you also need wall space just for furniture layout and hanging art on the walls. So I like that you took that into consideration. Of course, I always have comments on a kitchen, but that's not for here. On the exterior, color-wise, can you go back to the elevation there?
Sure.
You're showing like a neutral color. Is that the actual color or you have, you not selected colors yet? And have you thought about? There's trim, there's the accent piece that ties in those windows on the second floor, and then there's the overall color and then the roof color.
Yeah, so let me go back to the, and I will qualify this as a, you know, computer-generated rendering. And so, you know, you probably understand that color is always hard to get quite right. But the idea is that the body of the house would be a light gray.
Okay.
And that's what we're calling out in the elevations. And then the trim would be a darker gray, and the windows would be an obsidian, even darker frame. And then the roof is a, again, it's more of a medium gray. And then the front porch, the frame for the front porch is a very dark gray as well. So they're all, they're all gray. You know, shades of gray. It's kind of neutral. But that's, that's what we're trying to show there.
You said it was like a con, like the concrete board?
Oh, yes, it's a fiber cement board. Yeah, party boards are kind of common name for it.
What's the depth of, or the height of those planks about?
I think we call those out as six inch, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those were my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening. I'm Dan Harris. I had a few questions in reference to you. First, I do agree with the two ladies who spoke previously in reference to the garbage cans. You do need one, one garbage and one recycling per unit. One for a building is not enough. But we want to go on from there. Also, can you explain how you want to handle the water with the gutters?
Our engineer is going to answer those questions.
Engineer is going to answer those questions. Okay, I'll answer that. I'll save that one. And in reference to the surface for the driveway, sir, what is the driveway going to be? Concrete, is it pervious and non-pervious?
I'll defer to the engineer on that.
He'll provide that testimony, correct?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor.
I have a couple of questions. This is Bonnie Knox. You, Mr. Jordan, you had said that you do a lot in historical districts. Do you typically use casement windows in those districts?
It's a great question. When we're doing, we've, we've done a couple of instances with new buildings or many, many instances of additions, extensions to historic buildings. And in those cases, yes, we have used casement windows. However, when we're working with an existing structure, for instance, we do a lot of work in Jersey City and designated historic districts. We'll work on buildings from the 1870s with double-hung windows. And the standard is that you'll replace the window with whatever historical evidence you can find. So if, again, if it's a historic building that we're working in, we're going to be, we're going to adhere to that, to that, what was there previously in terms of a double-hung window and the divided lights and all that. In the case of new construction, though, you know, with historic districts in particular, the standards from the Department of Interior are pretty clear in terms of making the buildings a product of their time. And the casement windows, while, while historically there would be casement windows in buildings, there, it's more common now in houses than it was back in that period, of course. So to answer your question in a very roundabout way, yes, we do do casement windows in historic districts.
Okay. I'm just, you know, it could be personal preference. I'm, I'm not a fan of them, especially when you're on a street with a lot of older homes and they're all double-hung, and then you see, you drive down the street and you see a couple of new houses with the windows out instead of up. The next question, I, I think I misheard it. Mr. Caris, you might be able to answer this. The lot was what, 87 by 100?
I believe, yeah, it's 8,700 square feet, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and there's a little jog in the back.
Okay, so the frontage was, one of them was 50 and the other was 47?
45.
45. So is the lot that has 50 frontage, are they going to own the driveway and have the easement, or is there going to be a shared driveway?
It's going to be a shared driveway with an easement going over. The lot line will run down the middle, as you can see. Yeah.
Okay, and I think that was the only two questions I had.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Yes, me. Christopher Gonzalez. I'm sure this is four units in total, right?
Correct.
Okay, and these four units, are they going to be a company managing these four units?
The owner of the property is going to manage it.
The owner, okay. How often, if you guys decided to put one bin, one for garbage, one for recycle, how often are they going to be picked up?
Well, we'll do two and two. We're going to add, based upon the board's suggestion, we'll add an additional can for each.
Because I'm very familiar with the garbage and the recycle. I do have a restaurant and I live in a 190 units building. And we do have one recycle and three garbage, and they are, I mean, big containers, the one exactly like I have in the restaurant. And it's kind of enough. I mean, for me, if you're going to do like two pickups a week, it's more than enough, one and one. Just my.
Well, we'll, we'll start at, we can do two and two. You know, two for each unit, and then we'll see. We'll see how it plays out, you know, how the owner is the one that's going to be managing the property, they're building it to manage and to keep it. So they'll be able to gauge the demand and see whether or not they have too much or they have too little in terms of cans.
I mean, if you can have one for each unit, sure. I mean, perfect. My other question. The front of the building, it looks kind of modern for the whole block. There is any way to maybe incorporate some sort of a railing in the front, so it kind of matches the block?
So it, it doesn't show up very well in the rendering here, Mr. Gonzalez, but there is a railing in the front. Maybe it'll show up better in the elevation drawing. Bear with me. Yes, so there, here's the railing.
Okay.
Yep, so there would be a railing, and there, there needs to be for safety reasons, so.
Metal railing?
It is a metal railing. Yep.
So it makes it even more modern.
Yep, so, you know, like I said, it's, it's a modern interpretation of, you know, the 100-year-old buildings next to it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I love what you guys are planning to do. I mean, anything that whoever builds on the other side of Asbury, which is west of Memorial. I mean, if you guys are building this, it looks beautiful, but it kind of looks very modern to whatever the block has already. So if you maybe can incorporate some sort of a older style railing, it would kind of match the block itself.
Jeff, can we, can we bulk up the railing a little bit just to give a little more depth in a sense?
Yeah, we could use a thicker metal. We could use, you know, steel posts instead of steel bar. There's some things we could do to give a little bit more mass.
Personally, I like this. I, I, I wish it was even more modern. I don't, I don't think we should be trying to mimic something that was, I agree with your philosophy. I think it's, you know, it's, it's supposed to be part of history.
Thank you. Yeah, we want to give people something to study from this period, right?
Okay.
If we're just looking at everything from 1901, then that's just.
Okay, Catherine, but I'm talking.
I'm just adding my comment, Christopher.
So, um, now the center, it looks like it's going to be the driveway?
Correct.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question in, please. Can we possibly look at, you know, first, one thing, you're on the other side of that building. Before I ask my question, it's the Masani Temple. So your design is fine over there. And after that, it's basically a church, a parking lot, and the rest is public housing. So, you know, you're not interfering on that much of architecture in that area. But the one question, can we look at the parking lot, please, sir?
Absolutely.
Okay, now, you said you have, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's like, for, it should be one and a half parking lot spaces per unit, and you're going to have four units, so that equates to six parking spaces. Is there enough space there for everybody to properly turn around without hitting each other?
I, I'll defer to the engineer on that, but I will say that there are six spaces back here.
I understand that.
Yeah, we'll provide testimony from the engineer.
Everything I am asking from the engineer. Okay, thanks a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Jordan? All right, we can move to our professionals. Do you have any questions for Mr. Jordan?
No.
Hi. Sorry, I have a couple of questions, kind of, of the board members. Hi, sorry, I have um a couple of questions, kind of of the board members and, and the architect. Um. Um. So, Mr. Jordan, you stated the gross floor area is approximately twelve hundred square feet per unit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, did you measure from the exterior walls of the building?
Yeah, that's right, that's the um, the outside walls, or outside of the walls, I should say.
Um. Very good, okay, and can you tell me, was there any reason why there was no um space offered for the second floor units uh outside? The first floor unit obviously has um, you know, living quarters adjacent to the front porch. Um, but the second floor units don't have a balcony or any kind of outdoor porch area?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. We, we did look at that. We studied a number of different layouts, including doing the units side by side, um, front and back uh as a way to get them uh each unit access to the outdoors directly. The issue we ran into is that the, you know, the overall width of the building uh was a constraint for obvious reasons that. And so to do side by side units would have been quite snug. Uh, to do a front and back unit would have meant the back unit was linking onto the parking lot. So we decided that it was more appropriate to make them flats, give them windows on four sides. Um, the thinking is that the upper unit will have access to the front porch. Um, the other thought we had was, we had thought initially, and perhaps this is the, you know, the origin story for the flat roof on the um, the front porch. But initially, we thought it would be interesting to have a door out from the upper unit to the roof of the front porch. But looking at the neighboring buildings, um, you know, obviously they do not have that. And the idea that we would add a, uh, an occupiable space with the guardrail uh on top of that porch didn't feel appropriate, given the uh, the adjacent buildings. So, you know, it would be nice to add that space, but in the end, I think that the unit is much nicer. Um, you know, the actual interior unit without that space, because it's a, you know, it's a flat instead of a side by side or a front and back duplex. Um, and I think the front of the building probably looks better without having a occupiable roof deck over the front porch as well. So our hope is that having access um directly to the front porch will make that at least a shared space for the two units.
Okay, interesting. I, the board has seen other designs where they've had um that second floor um balcony or porch on the back of the building um to, so that there's equity there between the, the units.
Oh, sorry, and yeah, and the back of the building was a challenge because it's a parking, right? Yeah.
Um, I mean, it's not like it's, you know, twenty unit park, twenty parking spaces or something, it's just their own, their own colors. Um, okay, uh, and you said the colors. So, yeah, to me, the color on this plan reads a little more on the brown side of gray, I guess. But so you're saying a dark gray and a light gray and a very, very dark gray to obsidian for the trim, the window trim, I guess.
For the, the actual window frames, yep. So the frames would be the darkest and the trim would be slightly lighter. And then the um, the body of the building would be the lightest.
And are you also doing a, an accent color on the doors as?
Yeah, so there, let me just see if I can uh get the right information here. Yep, so they, it's, they're not a color, they're actually, the idea is that they're solid wood doors. And so what we tried to approximate in the rendering, and I'll, I'll acknowledge that it's hard to do well. Um, but that's supposed to be wood, right, to provide a little bit of accent.
Those are not glass panels in the doors?
Those are glass panels, that's correct. And then there's wood. So there'd be like a three quarter of light uh in the door.
Thank you.
But a wood door, okay.
Correct.
Uh, so just sort of natural, whatever.
That's right, yeah, it'd be stained and, you know, sealed.
Interesting, okay, and then, um. And then, uh, so it's cable wire, steel wire for the uh railings on the porch? Or is it actually?
So, yeah, it's, it's a cable rail system and then the top um is a, you know, it's, it's a bar and then there'll be posts at the ends. This is exhibit eight two, by the way.
Okay. So, um, so I want to ask the board members, um, you know, I understand there's this, you know, we don't always have to reproduce what came a hundred years ago. Uh, modern is good too. Do you find, I, I, I find that there's a sort of a conflict between the flat porch roof and the hip roof? Um, maybe that's, maybe that's just me and my visual difficulty with the building. But um, if you felt that the um main roof were flat or a gable, do you think it would convey more modern look? And, you know, then you wouldn't have that kind of it's missing of the dormer feeling. I don't know if that's more toward Brittany or um, uh. I'm not sure, Kitty, have you raised the point about the uh, the porch or if it was? Oh, it was Russell who raised the issue about the porch.
Um, I, oh, you go ahead.
Um, I, I would have to, you know, I, I'd have to agree with you and I appreciate you mentioning that, Donna, that I, I don't necessarily dislike the flat porch, but I'm not sure that I see the, the, the existing roof and the flat porch going together. I will say, Mr. Jordan, I really, personally, I really appreciate that you did not put a second floor deck on that flat roof. So thank you for that. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I get what they're trying to do here. And um, I like modern elements and I like a flat roof, but I agree that I, it, it maybe is the, the language of the relationship between the two that may be throwing me off a little bit.
I will offer, sorry to interrupt, but we did look at a gable roof. Um, and I, I have no objection to it. I think our, our concern was that the hip roof would probably be more appropriate, given the neighboring buildings. Um, and that's why we, we went with the hip roof, but um, the gable roof, you know, I think it certainly work as well, so.
Brittany?
I don't even know what a gable roof is. So wow, what is that? How is that different?
So, yeah, it would be more of a triangle, uh, like the Masonic building actually has a, a gable roof on it.
Instead of in the middle.
Good question. I, I happen to like the hip roof because we find the residences in the area that have those. And I think it matches those and you, you're taking that element and putting into this. Is there a way on the flat roof to add a little bit of a pitch to give that in a sense of it not being just flat? But there is, you know, an element to that, or are we, are we just limited with the space there?
No, I mean, we could do it. It, it would come up closer to the, let me go back to the front elevation here. So the roof would come up closer to the windows, which is what it's doing. You know, you can see here, it comes up to the underside of the window sills. Um, you could certainly do that. The issue that we have, and part of the reason we did this was that by keeping it flat, we're able to, and we'll go to the roof plan here. We're able to drain it back to the corners here, uh, and then bring the leaders down in the back as opposed to. You'll notice here, there's a gutter across the front.
Can't, can't you tilt those gutters though towards the back so they do go down to the same place?
You can, but what we were trying to avoid was the gutter in the first place, yep.
Okay.
So by doing this, we're able to take the gutters, you know, basically do a downspout in the, in the back and avoid the gutter altogether, so.
Yeah, but the gutter is almost an, you know, an element of the roof that you're, you know, you would be mimicking from the other two buildings. So the only thing I'm going to suggest to the board members who are kind of struggling with the design aspects. I think the two different roofs are in conflict on the facade. And, you know, maybe it doesn't need to be a full hip on the porch. That's a mathematical problem that the architect has to solve. You know, it has to be able to have enough pitch to, to work. So um, if it has to go as high up as the bottom of the windows, that's how high it has to come up. Otherwise, I, I think the hip on the main roof is what needs to change to um, to make it look more modern. Unless like, you know, Santa hat stuck on this. Um.
So just to clarify, sorry, you're, you're, you were saying that the front, the hip roof would preferably be a gabled in that situation, right? Not a flat roof.
You know. I don't know if a, you know, a pediment on the front, I, I, modern is, I don't really speak modern well, so I, I would not.
Understand.
Go with your flat porch roof necessarily, except, you know, a simple, very simple um gable. Which is then going to present, you know, a facade without a window and everybody's going to be like, why is it a blank wall? So, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. I, I just think what the, the problem is, is the conflicting roof styles. Um, visually.
Jeff, architecturally, what do you think works best to do a gable or if we were to add a bit of a hip over the porch?
Um, I personally think the gable would be, you know, better. Uh, that's where we started. Um, I think it would look better. I think Donna is right that the, you know, you will end up with a, you know, a fair amount of wall area here that doesn't have a window in it. Um, and, you know, similarly to not putting a dormer here with the window for the HVAC unit, I don't think it would make sense to do one for the, uh, in a gable roof either. So, you know, you'd have a fair amount of wall there. We could play with the pitch of the roof a bit, so maybe it's not quite as um steep. And so you have a little bit less roof, a little bit less gable. But um, you know, I, I will say that the, you know, when we landed on the hip roof, uh, after looking at the neighboring houses more closely, the nice thing about the hip roof is actually does present a flat, um, you know, edge here. And so the walls themselves are flat, you know, they're square, uh, which does, I think, correspond quite well actually with the front porch, so.
That, that's why I'd hate to say, I happen to like the hip roof. I just think it's a really nice look. You don't have that big front blank wall up top. That's what I'm thinking, but I'm not an architect.
Do we have to have a blank wall? I mean, I, there are many homes, I know, I actually own one that uh had a window in an attic. So that's not unusual in Asbury.
No, I think you're right, um, Mr. Jordan. I think the, the, you know, the attic in this case would be um an attic in name only. It's really just kind of mechanical space. And so it, it, it could be done. It'd be kind of a, you know, a false window in the sense that it's not doing much. But other than providing, um, you know, sort of visual benefit to the street, I suppose. I will say also that the, the hip roof does kind of go away a bit more. This view is, you know, kind of a privileged view where you're higher, slightly higher than the, you know, average eye is, I think. And so the roof is pitching back and you see less of it when it's a hip roof than if it were a gable, right? With the gable, you bring the entirety of the roof to the forefront, um, which makes it that more, much more imposing. So, um, you know, again, I think that the, the flat edge here all the way around actually works quite well with the flat, um, you know, front, front porch there, so.
Well, Mr. Jordan, would you be willing to go back to the drawing board, so to speak, and maybe bringing a couple of uh options that you feel would be appropriate based on the conversations that we've had?
I, I'd like to see if we can get through this application tonight, maybe come up to an agreement and uh get it done tonight.
So the only thing I'd like to offer is, I think, hipping the porch roof is the simpler solution or match. Uh, putting a gable on the main roof, I, I know you have to work within certain constraints for wind and, and snow load. But um, I want to caution about the overall building height restriction, because I think you might, um, even to get to the midpoint of the roof, you might be um creeping up on a, on a, on the maximum height. Because you're at twenty, where are we at now? Twenty-seven?
Seven.
Yeah, we're taking the, the midpoint at twenty-eight right now.
Yeah, so if you put a, um, you know, a gable and on a front, I think you're going to have a s- a higher peak. I, I think the midpoint might end up being at or where we are now, so I, I just.
What are the board members feeling about this discussion? Can I get some opinions thrown in here, please?
Well, I don't like the flat roof on the front. Um, I don't think it's very aesthetic. So I, I tend to agree with Donna on that. And I also, you know, we're pushing this off to the architect, but we're talking about it anyway. Um, and I'm also thinking about the amount of water that would accumulate on a flat roof if the drainage isn't correct. So, you know, I don't like the flat roof at all, in reference to that area.
All right, thanks, Danny. Anyone else?
I'm in agreement. I'm not a, I don't love the flat roof. Um, if it was pitched just a little bit, uh, I think that would be a big help. Um, you know, a dormer on the third floor is always really nice with a window, but it's, you know, certainly not necessary if, if the, if the flat roof was not flat anymore.
Great, Bonnie, thank you. Anyone else want to chime in?
I would, I would agree with Bonnie. Uh, I mean, just a little pitch on the center of the flat roof, it will help a lot. But I, I think it needs a little thicker railing.
Okay, thanks, Christopher.
I, I agree, the, the porch should be pitched. Um, but I have a question for Donna. Um, what exactly is the R two design standard? I know I'm going backtrack here, but I just need to settle this in my mind, because it seems very modern for the neighborhood it's in, so.
So there's sort of a, um. So there's two positions. Mr. Karas' position is the community design regulations don't apply to his proposal because they specifically state that they apply to development in the R one, R two PO and historic districts. What the board has done in the past, though, is kind of, you know, taken a more relaxed approach to that. Um, usually on the east side. Um, to apply it to more than just those, those locations. Um, however, our opinion is that, and our, I'm saying CCH as your consultant. Um, that because in the R three, it directs development to follow either the R two or the R three standards, depending on the type of development, that they've chosen R two because they're doing two family houses, then they should be subjected to those R two, you know, the whole world of R two regulations, which is.
That's my question. What are the R two regulations?
So it, single and two family houses, lot sizes that are twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. Um, the setbacks as described in my schedule in the report. Uh, and to be subject to the community design regulations. And so that means you have to design in accordance with the surrounding neighborhood architecture and use these guidelines for massing, roof type, uh ornamentation, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, do you have an opinion about?
I, I, I honestly, I think it's too modern for this neighborhood. I drove by it this afternoon. Um, you know, you've got those two older homes, you do have the Masonic Temple there, which is still an older building. But then you have the um, you know, I don't know what you call the, the community housing there too. So if I look at just what's the, the dwellings there, the, 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 the regular houses, so to speak, you know, they are the older houses. So I, I, I just, I, I just, um, my opinion is I think it's a little too modern for the area, but that's just.
Specifically talking about the roof and the, and the porch, do you have an opinion?
Specifically, actually, the porch and the windows, you know, the hip roof, I think, is great, because it, it, it's less imposing and it reduces the, you know, the visual impact. But I, I think that the, you know, if you, if you pitch the porch roof a little bit and redid the styling of the porch to try and fit it a little bit, casement windows, I, I, I got an issue with those on that street, but that's just my opinion.
That's great.
We'll, we'll present planning testimony. Keep in mind, there are only three houses that are there. Um, and you have mod- a modern development that's going up right down the street. You have a church, you have a multi uh family in the back. Um, so there are only three houses that we're really talking about. Um, I would respectfully have to disagree with Don, because when we look at what the code provides, it uh, it allows for the bulk standards. Um, if you don't have the ten thousand square feet to apply the R two bulk standards. The community design standards are a completely different section of the code. And it specifically talks about medium density zones distinguished from low densities, um, low residential zones. This is a medium density zone, um, and that's why those community standards don't apply specifically states R one, R two and the PO.
Because at, at the end, nothing tells us that uh, the other two houses uh right uh with this dwelling. Um, they might be bought or maybe the owner decides, decided to make it modern, so it can match the whole thing. It's only three houses, I mean, four with the two units over here.
I think the one thing that we're ignoring is the fact that the public housing, which is directly behind them, eventually, within the next few years, is going to be replaced with more modern housing. Um, as the west side is changing consistently. But, so, I mean, I, I would beg us to take that into consideration.
What it looks like.
I, I agree, Dan. I, I think those two houses are older next to it, but at some point, they're probably going to be updated and renovated as the west side gets more popular and you're going to start to see a lot more modern, um, you know, modernization of somebody's older home. So, you know, I think he, I think what we have here is a four square colonial, which is, fits in very well with the neighborhood, with just some modern touches to it. So, you know, it's bringing a little bit of the old and a little bit of the new together. I, I, I really like it.
And I believe across the street is a new development that was approved, that's a much more modern design.
If you look at the public housing, find the old Boston way, and the Michael's group did this, did their development, everything is modern over there. So we have to take into effect that the neighborhood is changing. Okay. So we're talking about two houses that I understand, you know, I understand holding on to the old, but everything else is going to change around here. And hopefully that's for the good. Just change the roof. I don't like that flat roof.
Any other board members want to talk about the flat roof?
Done. We'll pitch it.
All right. We're going to pitch it? Can we do that?
We can add a pitch to it.
All right. Board members happy with that? Can we move on?
Yes.
All right. Sounds good. Donna, are you done with your questioning?
Sorry, we really did get sidetracked there, huh?
It happens.
No, it's not a sidetrack. It's all part of the discussion.
Mr. Karris wants to get done tonight, so we have to cover everything, right?
I'm not going anywhere. I'm home.
I have no objection to this being resolved tonight.
Well, I, I want to, I, I know that I want to see, and I'm sure the other board members will want to see the rendering of that new pitch.
And we talked about the prevailing front yard setback. So, yes, I think that is it for my comments for the architects.
All right. Thank you. Our board engineer, do you have any questions for this architect or his testimony?
No questions for the architect. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. So we can open this up to the public now?
Yes.
All right. So we are now going to open up to the public. If you have any questions for Mr. Jordan, the architect, based on his testimony only, we would welcome your questions now.
AP TV, have any? Anyone?
Yvonne had her hand up and then put it back down, so I unmuted her. We'll see if she needs to say anything here.
Okay.
I was going to offer an opinion. It wasn't a question.
Oh, that would come later.
So I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Yes?
No, nobody else raising their hand?
There being, let's move to the next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Karris, you can bring up your next witness.
Bruce Jacobs, our engineer and also planner.
Mr. Jacobs, please raise your right hand. Thank you. You sound, and please unmute yourself.
All right.
I need to see a visual.
Yeah, why? I just lost visual.
Oh, here we are. Okay. Do you sign this testimony about to give in this moment with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Hey, please state your name for the record and spell it.
Bruce Jacobs, J-A-C-O-B-S.
Thank you. Mr. Karris, your witness.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobs, can you please give us a benefit of your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I received a bachelor's degree in engineering from Brigham Young University and have been practicing in the state of New Jersey for over 30 years. I'm a planning board engineer in another county, and I have testified in numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Do we accept your credentials?
One question. If I may, would that be in both a planner's capacity as well as a civil engineer's capacity?
That is correct. That's why I got the planner's license.
I got it. No problem. Just wanted to make sure I covered it. Thank you.
And I'll be offering him as a planner as well as an engineer.
That's why I wanted to ask that question. Okay.
Mr. Jacobs, are you familiar with this proposal for two, two-family houses? Am I correct?
That's correct.
What I'd like for you to do is first identify your plans, and then what I'm going to do is go through with you the general area that we're talking about and then the planners you developed there. Okay?
Okay. And all the Zoom testimonies that I've done, the board has provided the, the link to the plans. Does somebody have that? Because I don't have access on the device that I'm using at the present time.
I could, I could actually share it if you, if I'm allowed to share my screen.
Yeah, you should be allowed to share it.
Okay. All right.
Most of the boards I've been impairing from have live, we meet in the meeting hall, meeting rooms.
All right. Why don't we first go through the aerial as A1, and then I'll put up your plans. All right?
All right.
This is A1 for identification. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm getting my orientation where our lot is.
There we go.
Okay, we're located at 910 Cookman Avenue, and it's on the south side of Cookman Avenue. It's approximately 50 feet east of Langford Street. And it's also approximately 150 feet west of Memorial Drive. So.
All right. And it shows what the basic area around here. Am I correct?
Yes, there's apartments. Lincoln Village Apartment Housing Authority complex is to the south of the site. There's multifamily dwellings on Cookman Avenue to the, to the east or, or single family, multifamily to the east. The Mount Piscata Lodge is to the west and across the street to the north is vacant property at the present time. But it's our understanding that that's going to be, it's been approved by the planning board for a mid-rise multifamily development. And so that's what's immediately surrounding the, surrounding the site. And then you'll also know that the, the train station is approximately 200 feet away at the east end of Cookman Avenue.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to go to A3 for identification. And looking at what's been marked as A3, are you familiar with this?
Yes, it's the minor subdivision.
Okay. And why don't you go through this then?
Okay. So what we propose is to create two building lots, subdivide the existing property into two building lots. The property is the shape of, for lack of a better words, like the state of Utah. It's irregular shaped. It's 100 feet deep on the, on the left, on the left side or the east side and and 80 feet deep on the other side. The property is 95 feet wide. There's an existing house. It's not shown on the subdivision because we are assuming that it would be taken down prior to the filing of the map. But on the, but on the west side, or excuse me, east side, there's an existing driveway from, from the existing house that's over there on Lot 4. And we're proposing a three by 80 driveway easement to accommodate that, the existing driveway so that they can utilize their own driveway. There was a question whether there would be shared access to that driveway from our property, and the answer is no.
So the driveway and the easement would be for the benefit of Lot 4, which is to the east. Am I correct?
That is correct. And then we propose in the center of the lot, along the, the common property line of our proposed subdivision, we're proposing a driveway easement that goes down that so that, so that we can have a shared driveway to service both new building lots.
So that would be a cross easement for the benefit of both lots. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Anything else on what's been marked as A3 for identification?
Not really. Almost everything else that we're going to be discussing is what's going to happen on those particular lots. You'll notice that we show the building envelopes on the minor subdivision and the, and the houses are proposed within those building envelopes.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to bring up A4 for identification. And take a look at A4. Is this the plan that you prepared?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Let's go through that. We'll go through page by page. The first page that we're looking at is one of four. Go ahead.
Okay, one of four is the, is the site plan. And, and what you'll notice is we, has been, has been discussed, we have two duplex buildings on the site. They are set back 15 feet to the, to the main part of the building, which is the prevailing setback. I have gone out and measured all the dwellings on the, on the, on the block. And the average prevailing setback is 14.8 feet, and we show this at 15 feet. What, as we go through there, you'll notice in the, as you go through the center of the, the, the property, you'll see the common driveway. It makes a T shape. On the right-hand side, there's parking for two vehicles immediately behind the building on Lot 3.01. And then there will be a, a third parking space that's against the far rear property line directly behind the, directly in line of the driveway. Then we're proposing three parking spaces immediately to the east of those for new lot 3.02. The driveway is in that T shape to allow for people to back up and get on and come out facing forward onto Cookman Avenue. One thing that I will point out is that after looking at the review letters from the board engineer, I'm going to propose to extend that driveway a little bit further to the east that will be close to where, close to the easement, but we'll have a fence there to block off access to allow for the third car in that, the most easterly parking stall to be able to back out. And the reason for that is because the, the drive aisle behind the house is 20 feet wide. It's, 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 it's tight, but you can, you can maneuver vehicles through there to come out for, frontward.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about, along the rear of the property, is there going to be fencing there?
Yes, we're going to propose a six-foot-high stockade or board-on-board fence along the back of the property. It's going to be wood. Wood is more durable than a vinyl fence. I mean, the adjoining on there has vinyl, but we're going to go with a wood fence back there.
And what about the material for the driveway in the parking area?
The material in the driveway can either be pavement or concrete. Concrete is what's in the neighborhood, so it will most likely be a, it could be a concrete driveway.
All right. I'm going to go down to just look at the zoning map a little bit. All right. You have here the zone map of the R3 as developed as an R, or as utilized in RT standards. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And it reflects a variance relief that's needed for this particular application?
Correct.
One of them for each lot is going to be lot area, correct?
That's correct.
Lot width for Lot 302, am I correct?
That's correct.
We don't need variance relief for the side yards or for the front yard based upon it being prevailing, correct?
That's correct.
All right. For the going down, we'll need for density FAR and for building coverage as reflected on here. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Continuing down, I'm going to go to page two. And if you can take a look at that and discuss what we're looking at on page two.
Page two is a demolition plan. It's a plan of where we propose to remove the existing dwelling and the associated driveway.
And when we look at the existing dwelling, that's a three-story dwelling, am I correct?
That's correct.
And it's right on the property line and where that driveway and the driveway easement is going to be. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And the proposed development, the residence that's going to be on that particular lot with that existing three-story dwelling is, that's going to be moved away from that property line to create more space between the buildings. Am I correct?
That is correct. We're going to gain an additional, approximately just over five feet additional for separation between the two buildings.
Okay. Is that a benefit then to the neighborhood by doing that?
Yeah, it's a major benefit. The, the next door neighbor of, on Lot 4 won't feel like there's a house right on top of their driveway.
I'm going to continue on to the next page of the plans. Okay, what are we looking at here?
We're looking at the landscape plan, and what we propose is some landscaping along the frontage of the site, proposing some street trees, some foundation plantings at the, in front of the house, and then to shield the headlight glare from the, in addition to fencing, we're proposing some shrubs along the parking areas.
On both sides of the parking areas?
On both sides, yes.
Okay. And then the type of plants that you're proposing, what is it and why are you making those recommendations?
They're, they're, they can, in the back along the parking area, there's, there're small shrubs and they can handle the area, this, a small area, and, and they're typically used to block headlight glare. They're dense shrubs. The proposed trees in the front, the street trees, we're proposing a service berry, which is a small ornamental tree. It's a four-season tree and it gives all sorts of interest. It's shorter than your, the, the trees that are in the recommended in the ordinance, but you'll notice that there's existing wires, telephone and electric wires going along the frontage of the street. And rather than, as they mature, they get cut back and look ugly with the, when they are trimming the tree lines underneath the wires, we propose to put in a, the service berry, which is, you know, multi-season. It handles the salt air quite well. And according to my landscape architect, it would be the ideal tree to use in this particular site.
All right. Continuing on, the last page has some detail. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What I'd like to do is I'm going to initially now go through the reports of, before I get to that drainage. Can you describe the drainage for the site and what is being proposed?
Okay, what we propose is to connect the roof drains from the different corners of the building and direct them back to a dry well that will be constructed in the rear of the site adjacent to the parking areas. We picked that place so that you could put, put the dry well where, where it could be, handle the stormwater for the, for the various storms, but also so that it would not be driven on. Rather than put a pipe and go out to the street because of the driveway situation, we decided to go with separate dry wells, and they, and they handled the water quality storm.
As to upon your opinion as an engineer, is the drainage that you're being proposed sufficient to handle all the water and the rain and the storms that may occur?
This, the dry well will handle the lower frequency storms. The, anything that comes off of the site, that site is graded in such a manner that it will drain towards Cookman Avenue in the same pattern that it does now. We've submitted some drainage calculations that demonstrate that there'll be little to no increase in runoff for all the different storm events.
Now, this particular property where it's located, it's within what would be deemed a transitional area. Am I correct?
That's correct. We're transitioning from a higher density apartment building, multifamily, transitioning as you go north to more single family.
And because of that, there's what is being proposed. And because of that, there's what is being proposed fit within that area?
Yes, it's ideal for being in that in this locale. The transition area is ideal for stepping down to a two family dwell, two two family dwellings and then going down into the the single family. And with the and and it even fits in even better now that there's a mid rock mid rise multifamily development being that was recently approved directly across the street.
In terms of the FAR, do you have the FAR calculations for this particular site and these the proposed buildings?
Yes, the FAR ratio required by the municipality is 0.5. When we add in the 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 livable space of the gross floor area of the floors and then the 171 square feet of the attic, we have a total of 2571 square feet of building. When you calculate that with the the two sized lots, lot 3.01 being that that is a 4,200 square foot lot, it calculates out to be 0.61 and lot 3.02 calculates out to be 0.57. So they're just slightly above the the ratio proposed by the or mandated by the town.
Now, that would require a D4 variance for the FAR, am I correct?
That's correct.
Planning wise, are you able to offer an opinion to support the granting of that D4 variance?
Yes, with a D4 variance for FAR, you must show that the site will accommodate the the problems associated with the floor being slightly larger than permitted by the ordinance. And so when you look at the master plan and the zoning ordinance, it'll it allows for two family dwellings or multifamily dwellings in the R3 zone, and we're a two family. Each unit is on each floor, the units are of modest size, 1,200 square feet each. The attic is not considered habitable, it's just used for placement of the HVAC equipment, et cetera.
But be anything over seven feet, though, irrespective of the fact that it's not being used for occupancy, it still has to be considered for the FAR, am I correct?
Correct, but because it's not being used as habitable space that that adds a benefit to it, in my opinion. Along those lines, we're not increasing the density, we're below the density requirements of the zone. So it's 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 a positive in that regard, so that the FAR is not a hindrance to the municipality or the zone plan. The the buildings all comply with the setback requirements of the R2 and the massing has been that has been discussed previously by the architect is similar in size to the adjacent buildings. So it keeps and it's in keeping with the growth pattern of the area and the near proximity to the train station. So by looking at this, we believe that those are all positive reasons for allowing the permitting the exceedance on the FAR. And you look at the negative criteria associated with that. And so it's my opinion that it the slight increase, it's a it's a minimal increase and it won't have any detrimental effect on the on the surrounding area because the the buildings themselves all are located within the setbacks. And that was what the intent of the FAR was to limit the size and placement of the structures.
Am I correct, what you're also doing is you create right now, you have a single one dwelling that's located all the way to one side of the property, almost on top of the adjacent site. What we're doing is creating balance on this site by creating residential units that fit within that side where those other residential units are, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, what I want to do is I want to have you go through and I'll go through with you the planning and the engineering reports that have been provided. The first one I'm going to bring up is the planning report dated October 21, 2020. And go into page four 13. That talks about the FAR and we just covered that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, building coverage of variance on section E of that page four 13, variances required for that excessive building coverage, am I correct?
Correct.
Can you discuss that a little bit, whether or not there'd be any negative impact based upon that additional coverage?
I don't believe that there will be on the on the coverage, 25% allowed. Were it because of the uneven distribution of the lot, we were at 34% building coverage on lot 3.01 and 31.7% on three lot 3.02. What that boils down to is that there's an increase of 378 square feet, which isn't is not that is not that large considering the entire building fits within the setback requirements.
Okay, continuing.
And that's the worst one, that was the worst one, the other one's 303.
Page five of 13, Austria parking, we know that we are in compliance with the parking requirements, am I correct?
That's correct.
3.4 street trees, there's a recommendation London plane tree, honey locust or American Linden, can you comment on that?
Well, that's where I was talking about the service berry. The all the trees that are listed in the ordinance are larger trees. And as they mature, all their branches will be into the the wires, overhead wires. And it's and it's my landscapes architects recommendations that we pick a tree that doesn't have to always be trimmed as it matures to accommodate the electric companies.
And we'd have no objection to working with the shade tree commission to whatever recommendations they may have, am I correct?
Right, I mean, if 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 the board doesn't want to approve the smaller trees, he suggests that we could use the London plain tree, that one will have the will be the least impacted by future trimming by the electric companies.
Go into page six of 13. Fencing, we've already discussed, we're going to use wood as material refuse and recycling, we've discussed stormwater, we just discussed architecture was reviewed by the architect. In terms of the C variance relief, can you give an opinion as to the positive negative criteria as to whether or not you can support the C variances with the proposal that is being presented?
Well, as we look at the as we look at the site, this is an appropriate use of the site for the two family dwellings. It makes the trend, it makes the transition from the larger apartment complexes to the south to the single family dwellings further north on this side of the street. In addition, there there with the recently approved mid rise multifamily development directly across the street, this increases the desirability for these two family units, even when the variances are needed. There's adequate provisions for light air and open space, the the dwellings will comply with the bulk set back requirements. There's an appropriate promotion of the population densities. We're within the requirements of the zoning requirements for the for the development. And and with regard to the transportation element, the project is located in very close proximity to the train station, so it promotes pedestrian access to areas designated for mass transportation. So everything that we're proposing here is ideally suited for the area that we're in, particularly in this transition area.
What I'd like to do now is go through the insight report that's dated October 16, 2020. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to take you over to page two of that report. Just hit a number of these comments on the completeness review. It notes in there correction of 46 feet rather than 48, that will be revised accordingly, am I correct?
Yes, I I yeah, we can do those types of things, yes.
All right, the lot numbers, we're asking for a temporary waiver, we'll obtain those from the city tax assessor, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. The existing structure that's still there, am I correct?
Yeah, it's still there on the site. We were just removing it for clarity on the subdivision plan.
Number four, corner marker to be set the southern end of the proposed subdivision, no issue with that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Number five, it indicates several contours terminate error of the plan, it appeared to be in look in the location, the existing structure, they're asking for clarification on it.
Okay, on the minor subdivision, when we took the house off, the contours ended at the house. So that's why they go nowhere. So when we put the house back on the minor subdivision plans, that that goes away. So it's not an it's not an issue.
All right. Number six, asks about the buffering to adjacent lot one and two. Do you believe that the buffering that you provided is appropriate and sufficient?
For this size lot, it's appropriate and sufficient. We're using the fence as the buffering material and then the planting material, the shrubs is really visual for the people that will be occupying these proposed dwellings because they won't exactly be seen from the adjoining property owners.
As we continue on. Number seven, proposed deeds or covenants, we'll have that taken care of.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there aren't any.
But any subdivision deeds will be submitted for a review. The architectural elements have been covered, lighting has been covered, stormwater runoff. Why don't we run through this a little bit, the drainage calculations that are being requested in 10A? Can you go through that?
We've provided drainage calculations, we did a sample of just the 25 year storm event, but the relationship is the same for the two 10 and 100. What we'll we'll do that, I talked to the engineer and we'll we'll provide them a comparison calculations to show that the about the maximum runoff coming off the site is around one CFS.
Capacity calculations for the proposed four inch pipes leading to the dry well, no issue with providing those, am I correct?
We can provide that.
Okay, runoff. It's testimony being sought regarding the stormwater runoff from lower frequency rain events and the impact on neighboring properties, can you address that?
All runoff, the way we've graded the site, we'll go down the side property lines and through the common driveway out towards Cookman Avenue. So there shouldn't be any impact on the joiners and the and the way it's designed, it's 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 designed where there's little, either no change or just a de minimis increase in the in runoff from the site.
Dean has wants to dry well reach capacity, will where will the runoff be directed?
It will flow in the natural drainage pattern along the side property lines towards Cookman Avenue.
Very good. All right, um, no issue with providing operation manual for the stormwater system, am I correct?
We can do that.
Excuse me, Andy?
Yeah.
Get the letter E of 10?
Did I skip one?
Test bit?
Oh, I'm sorry, test and permeability testing, no issue with that?
No issue, we did a test bit, I just omitted sending the soil log with my drainage calculation.
You'll submit that, am I correct?
So we'll submit it.
And G request into dry wells, we place minimum 10 feet from the property lines and buildings and the setback to the ORW may be relaxed. Any issue with that?
I would I would ask that we could leave the dry wells where we're proposing them in the back, it's the it's the most ideal location for them as they're the furthest distance that we can get from the property lines, but we need relief from the 10 feet. If you put them in the front yard, the only open space in the front yard is where all the utilities are coming in, the water in the sewer and the gas. So there's fewer conflicts if you put them in the rear yard and we'd ask that the board relax that requirement and allow us to put them in the rear yards.
Okay. Number 11, it talks about sanitary sewer cleanouts that will be shown on all sanitary laterals within 10 feet of the building.
Yes.
No issue with that?
We will do that.
Pay repair sections, no issue with that?
Nope.
Same with 13, the concrete curb and gutter details, you're okay with that?
Yes.
14 sidewalk details, you're okay with that?
Yes.
And 15 is the proposed parking, that's efficient for the site, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, number 16, it indicates existing conditions demolition plan noted utility poles to be removed, however, the site plan notices to be remaining and the driveway is constructed in the location which avoids the utility pole, can you clarify that?
Okay, the utility pole is an error on our part, it's to remain. It's outside of the driveway cut, so we will allow it to remain.
Okay. In terms of drive aisle movement, can you testify as to whether or not what you have designed is appropriate and whether or not cars can move safely within that parking area?
On lot 3.01, cars can move safely, they as they pull into the parking stalls, they'll back up onto lot 3.02, do a K turn and come back out to Cookman Avenue on lot 3.02.
Pardon me, it's Donna, Andy, can you, I'm not sure who's working the screen for Bruce, adjust the page to show the layout, so as he's describing the the turning and maneuvering?
Oh, sure.
The right thing? And maybe zoom in a little so people can get a sense of what what's really happening.
Is that good?
Okay, so as a car comes in, we'll start with lot 3.01, they'll come down the driveway, they can make the turn and and park in either one of the three parking spaces. They'll do a K turn to on to lot 3.02 and then come out forward on the the parking areas for lot 3.02, we'll do the same thing. But what I propose is to extend the parking area a little bit closer to the area where the proposed shrubs are shown. Because the the last parking stall, the one furthest east is 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 tight for that, particularly with driveway. So we'll do that and 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 then they can turn and and come back, make a K turn and come out. Car forward to to the street. So there is adequate area to to make the maneuvers with that adjustment.
Okay. 18 in here says, please note that our review of the application documents is not included structural engineering review. Defer to the construction official. Is it necessary to have a structural engineering review at this time?
There's nothing on my plans that require structural engineering review.
Very good. Exterior mechanical and refuse equipment that's in the back, am I correct?
That's correct. It's immediately behind the the buildings. And as we've discussed with the architect, there's adequate wall space be back there that we could add two additional sets of cans for each unit and we'll put place all the cans in a a small corral to keep them so that they don't blow around.
20 proposed phasing of the project, your understanding is it won't be phased, it'll just all be constructed at the same time, am I correct?
That's correct.
And maintaining the properties, you understand the owner who is owns the site and building properties will be maintaining them, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, 22, the sewer connection fees, that'll be dealt with at the appropriate time. Outside agency approvals, have we received a response from the county on this?
Yes, Ocean or Monmouth County Planning Board gave us a letter of exemption. After we get approval from the board, we'll make a submission to the Freagles Soil Conservation District.
And lastly, if the refuser is we've gone through that testimony already, am I correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything further that you want to add to your testimony?
Not that I'm aware of.
Andy, if you approve, how are you going to perfect this deed or sub or map?
Subdivision deeds.
Are there any board members that have any questions for Mr. Jacobs?
I have a few, but does anyone want to go first?
I think you should go first, Brittany, it's it's you. I think you should go first, Brittany, it's, it's you.
So in Jason's report, the, on page, is it page? Three. Number nine, it says the lighting plan hasn't been submitted. I know you testified to the lighting and the architect did too, but is there going to be any photometric plans submitted?
I didn't see the need for the photometrics. You're dealing with a 15 foot area in between the buildings. So the, the small lights that the architect is proposing on the side of the building would adequately cover the driveway portion. In addition, on the utility pole that's in front of the driveway out on Cookman Avenue has a, has a light on it, a Cobra headlight, so that also provides adequate light. And I believe this would be no different than your own home where you would have parking in the area of it, you would minimize the lights around the, the parking area in the back. So the, the light on the back of the buildings at the, at the entries should be sufficient to cover the area of the parking area.
Well, I'm more worried about the other way. Is it going to reflect on the neighbors? Cause this is one lot that's going into two, so it's.
No, because the architect testified that he has downward pointed lights on the rear of the buildings.
I'd still like to see a photometric plan if that's either from you or the architect.
We can, we can do a plan as condition of to show that nothing's going to spill off the property.
All right, well, in addition to that, I know you said that there's no difference between designing the runoff from the 25 year flood, 25 year storm, you said to the 10 and 100 year, it's all the same?
The relationship is the same. If there's no increase in the 10 or the 25, there's no increase in the 100.
Right, what about the two?
The same thing goes for the two, it's all relationship. What we designed is, is that the site has already got a house and, and impervious surfaces on it. And what we did, it was, we did a comparison of what was the difference between what exists now and what we're proposing after, after the, the effects of the drywall. As, as we get into the higher storms, a slight increase in runoff will go towards Cookman Avenue because the drywalls are designed for the smaller storms. It wasn't designed as a detention basin like you would on a, a large development.
Okay, but in your drainage report, it says the impervious coverage, this is second paragraph, the impervious coverage has increased from 2, 2,731 square feet to 5,880 square feet, that's more than double. And you're saying that there's not going to be any changes? In the amount of runoff?
What I did is I did a comparison of the pre-development for the entire site and the post-development of the entire site. And for the 25 year storm, they were roughly the same.
What do you mean pre? Like nothing there or how it is now?
No, how it is now.
Existing.
Okay, well, I need to see that because I do not believe that one bit. I don't understand how you can double your coverage and there's no.
Well, what it is, is we're taking the roof runoff and.
I know, into your driveway.
Please allow him to finish his testimony. He's providing for, he provided a drainage plan, he's dealing with the roof runoff, which results in it being essentially the same.
Right, but our engineers are recommending it be in the front yard and you're saying it needs to be in the backyard, so there's.
I'm, I'm recommending that the structure be placed in the backyard. Otherwise, I can put pipes and put it under the ground and run it down the driveway.
And it's not changing the calculations, am I correct, Bruce? It's not changing the calculations, the location.
That's correct. The location doesn't change the calculations, it's how, whether I put it in a pipe or whether I put it in a, a box structure.
Is there a, some kind of storm, wastewater or stormwater line that runs down there that you can tie into the city? I know we've made other applicants do that, that have had such a significant increase in impervious coverage.
The nearest inlet is quite a ways down the street, it's, it's at least a couple lots over. So that wouldn't be practical. The only other way is, is to put in a bubbler inlet and put it in the near the, near the sidewalk.
But based upon the fact that you've designed it whereby there's no real net increase, do you think that's appropriate?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, excuse me. Jason, Brittany, would it be, would it be?
Yeah.
Jason stepped in here and helped us out a bit?
Yeah, that was my next question, thank you.
Okay, Jason?
Jason here, yep, so.
Move out a bit, you're under oath.
I'm under oath. Yeah, so one, one of the comments we made in our letter is we're looking for more calculations to substantiate what Bruce is testifying to. In concept, maybe it's okay, but I, I think we got to see, we, we need to see these calculations in further detail for the other storm. So if the roof goes to the drywall, that's great, I can see that mitigating the increase in runoff. But as these bigger storms hit, that drywall is not designed for those bigger storms, so we're going to get overflow and runoff. That all needs to be calculated together and we need to see that. And if the results are, are what he's testifying to, that's great, if not, one thing I will say though, the drywall, I'm uncomfortable having less than 10 feet to the property line for the drywall. If it wants to be in the rear yard, if that's where they prefer it, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with it going under the parking. Might be better at that point to do more of a, of a stone structure than a, than a, than an open structure, but you know, that can be designed on the property to accommodate vehicular loading. What we can accommodate is what goes on, on the neighbor's property. So that 10 feet, in my opinion, should be maintained.
All right, so I could, I can redesign that and put it in the driveway as long as I can be within 10 feet of the common, common property line of the, of the development. Because then I'd go down, right down the middle of the driveway.
Why can't you put it under the parking spaces?
I could do that too.
So you gotta have, you gotta have 10 feet from your structure and from the property lines. And when you do the calculations, the two 10, 25 and 100 year storms, if there's an increase in runoff out to the street and we need to get bigger and we're pinched by the 10 feet, I think that's when we start to explore encroaching on the subdivision line.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay.
Jason, why have you, um, do you think, I'm not quite sure, I guess there's a question for you, Bruce, what were you saying, you're going to change the east side of the parking lot? You're going to push out a little bit more than what it's seen?
I'm going to extend the drive aisle, shall we say, further east along the back of the house to closer to those shrubs that you see on the exhibit.
Where you see the dotted parking area, it's going to move over closest to shrubs a little bit.
And you testified that's concrete, right?
From my understanding with the applicant, he was looking for a durable surface.
Durable, you mean impervious?
Impervious.
So while we're talking about that, I, I just want to bring something up for consideration. Question first for you, Bruce, please. That, what is the drive aisle width behind the three spaces on lot 3.02?
20 feet.
All right, so for 90 degree parking in our ordinance, you're proposing nine foot wide spaces, I believe, correct?
Correct.
All right, so the ordinance would require 23 feet. And then if the spaces were nine and a half feet wide, the ordinance would require 22 feet. Typically with 90, with nine by 18 parking spaces, 90 degree parking, most ordinances are between 24 and 25 feet. In the more urban and micro urban areas where development is much more dense, they, they pinch down a little bit. And that's what this ordinance does here. So again, nine foot wide spaces require 23 foot drive aisles, nine and a half foot spaces require 22 foot drive aisles. We're down at 20. 20 feet is the 22, I'm sorry, 20 feet that's proposed is plenty for two cars to pass each other and whatnot. Where it becomes a challenge is a car operating in a space. Where, where you can make an argument for it is in a case like this because these are residents that park there every day. The turnover is low and they become very accustomed to it. You see this a lot in places like Jersey City and Newark and Hoboken, you know, where the parking garages are and stuff. And we've actually seen it a couple of times here in Asbury Park, these tighter situations. I'm not pushing either way, I just wanted to bring it up for your consideration.
The other thing that you can do is go to a 10 foot wide space and then that would accommodate that as well.
Yeah, I believe our ordinance only goes up to nine and a half, but in theory, you're right, if it's 10 feet wide, you've got a little more room to, to waddle the car to make the 20 foot drive aisle work.
Bruce, we can extend these spaces to nine and a half feet each, can't we? That's.
We can extend those, this, widen the spaces out, yes.
Wouldn't that take up more coverage though?
Yes, and then we'll have to accommodate that in the, in the stormwater.
All right, that's all my questions, thank you.
Any other board members? Know whether the board members have any questions for Mr. Jacobs?
I might have a couple, if I count in that category.
You are not a board member, you are a professional. I am a board member and I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, this is Russell Lewis, I'm the acting chair this evening. I also sit on the Environment and Shade Tree Commission. I am not a tree expert by any stretch. I've never heard of the service berry. I am not going to say that the Environment and Shade Tree Commission is not going to approve that, but I would definitely recommend that if that is the tree that you were proposing to put into the green strip, that you do at least connect with the chairman of the Environment and Shade Tree Commission and make sure that that is approved.
Yeah, I, I'd indicate, I think it's a good idea. I would do that a lot, so.
Yeah, I would not recommend a London plane. We're actively trying to get rid of the monoculture of the London plane in town. The London plane has not worked out to be a very good street tree for us, especially specifically under wires. When you talk about the overhead wires there on this block of Cookman, were you able to determine if these wires were going to other properties or because it's such a short block, I'm, I'm wondering if the, the overhead wires were actually the service wires to the proposed property here and if we might not be able to bury the electrical wires while we're doing this type of new construction and eliminate wires above.
That's a possibility, but I was what my landscape architect was looking at was the longitudinal wires going parallel with Cookman Avenue. Not so much the service wires going to the individual.
I understand, but I'm just, I'm, well, if there's no buildings here existing, then I guess we could assume that they are live wires or if they're guide wires or if, if there is an opportunity for us to bury the wires and, and create more of a, a open canopy space, that would definitely be something that I would like to see. Going back to the shared existing driveway between lot 3.02 and, and the existing lot to the east. Like I said before, I know that that has been a shared driveway for generations and there's an easement there. I'm just wanting to clarify and determine that in this new proposal that that driveway will then become solely for the use of that property to the east and will the deeds reflect that?
It'll be recorded easement.
Recorded easement, what does that mean exactly?
Where the easement will reflect that the driveway is going to be for the benefit that piece that's on our property, there will be an easement for the benefit of the adjacent lot for.
Okay, great, thank you.
Does anybody have any objection if the driveway as we reflect was to be asphalt on here as opposed to concrete?
I would prefer it not to be asphalt. I would, yes. If those are the two options, yes. I don't know if the rest of the board has any opinion on that.
They want it to be permeable, but I don't know if that's on the table.
Can't hear.
Danny, we, we can't hear you, Danny, speak up.
My bad, I said I would prefer concrete as to asphalt for the driveway. So it's a little more attractive. Even in reference to that into, on Mr. Jacobs, in reference to Mount Piers Church, the church in that neighborhood is Bethel AM Zion Church, not Mount Piers, because Mount Piers goes maybe a half a mile down the street.
Okay. My apologies.
Any other board members have any other questions for Mr. Jacobs at this time? If not, we'll turn it over to our board professionals.
Russell, I have one more. I meant to ask this, how did you come up with the property lines and the subdivision?
All right. Because the, the east side of the property was deeper, we decided that rather than go for two variances for lot width, we decided to go for one variance for lot width. And that would be the lot 3.02 because it also had the deeper lot. And, and so what we were trying to do was balance the lot area and the lot widths. So lot 3.01 is the shorter depth lot of 80 feet, so we tried to give it the, the frontage of 50.
Doesn't it also then you have dedicated to each lot, three parking spaces by making that line down the middle that way?
That is correct as well. That, that was the other benefit that came out of it.
All right, thank you.
Jason, you're up, or Donna, or both?
So this is Jason, we're, we're looking, as we're talking here, we're, I'm looking at that drive aisle with, behind those parking spaces and, and I think the discussion we had is pretty conclusive. If we are under what the ordinance requires, we should look at widening the spaces. We might need to take another look though to see how wide that drive aisle actually is, we might be okay. So either way, we have an answer. I just wanted to bring that up, make sure we have that addressed. There was some comments under stormwater and I, I think they're all covered. Like we're going to check the capacity of the pipe that's collecting the roof runoff. We're going to get supplemental information about what happens to the larger storms when there's overflow, where does it go and is it stable? The mechanical equipment, the AC units are in the rear. You know, the, the board oftentimes talks about where the gas and electrical meters are going to go. I don't know if you guys want to explore that a little bit.
The gas meter for 910, which is lot 3.02, will be on the east side of the building towards the front. And the other lot, nine, house number 912 will be on the west side of the building towards the front. But both meters will be on the, on the sides of the building.
Okay.
And that's noted on our plans.
We talked about the drywells. Again, we have clarity on the access aisle and how the parking works and whatnot. If we're insufficient, Bruce, we should look at some sort of turning plan, just to demonstrate that it is adequate.
Okay.
I'm, with, with the direction that the board just provided through discussion, I'm, I'm comfortable looking at that offline, just to show that those vehicles can move. And if for any reason there's a conflict, then we would come back to board and talk about it or, you know, go through a redesign. But we just want to make sure that those cars can move back there. And it, it's looking like it'll work out, but again, we should just address it. You had mentioned earlier, nothing about deed notices or easements or anything like that. We got the easement for the shared drive and also the stormwater system, that's going to be a notice on the deed. You guys are okay with that? Okay. Okay. And then, uh, my other question was about the lighting plan, but Brittany addressed that already. That, that was raised. I don't think it's been resolved, but, uh, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, we'll just submit something. I mean, it's, you're talking about two family houses. Your minimal lighting that you'd find in any residential structure. Um, we'll provide a plan to show there's not going to be any offsite spillage from those lights.
That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
All right. Um, do we have anyone in the public?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donna, how could I forget you?
Indeed.
You know, I usually go to you first and, you know, I'm so sorry.
It's quite all right. So, um, a little bit of minutia here. Jason, um, the parking dimensional standards you're talking about are technically not applicable to single and two family dwellings. Um, but the, uh,
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Uh, but you know, you're completely justified in asking for a turning movement diagram to show that it's still going to function. Um, and maybe then you get the, maybe it needs to be a ten foot wide space instead of a nine and a half foot, foot wide space, you know, just so long as it, it's practical and functions.
We'll, we'll work with Jason to make sure he has that information.
As far as you don't need any additional exceptions related to those dimensional standards. Um, okay, so, Mr. Jacobs. Um, you, I'd like to hear more about the decision-making on, um, the lot sizes and and I'm not sure if we're going to need to, to bring the architect or, uh, Andy, are you going to have the applicant himself testify at all?
No need.
Um, so I need some information about the decision-making for two, two family houses.
What do you mean decision-making?
Well, so why, why was this arrangement of lots, sizes and, and uses proposed? Um, because they need variances, um, including FAR and building coverage. As well as the dimensional stuff, so, um.
Uh, that, that's a planning testimony for Mr. Jacobs. Um, I'll have him repeat that testimony then.
Well, so he, he gave us this sort of general balancing of the lot areas and this transitioning from, you know, high density to medium density, low density. Um, but why specifically wasn't a conforming layout considered? You know, a five thousand square foot lot with a two-family house and then a thirty seven hundred square foot lot with a single-family house. That, you know, a two-family, this two-family house on a five thousand square foot lot wouldn't need an FAR variance or building coverage.
Bruce, can you address that, the planning wise, the two lots?
All right. Um, if you were to create a five thousand square foot lot, that would be the, in order to do that, you would have the easternmost lot, which is labeled three point oh two. If that lot line was fifty feet wide by a hundred foot deep, that is your five thousand square feet. Okay, and then that would be a conforming lot. The other lot would be undersized even further. It would be a four thousand square foot lot.
No, it'd be a thirty seven hun- it would be a thirty seven hundred square foot lot. And a twenty five hundred is the minimum for this.
No, no, it would be forty feet by eighty.
You have an eighty seven hundred square foot lot. If it's five thousand and thirty seven hundred, that's eighty seven hundred, right?
Did I just? Forty-seven times.
Fifty-five hundred. And then.
And then you'd have this little sliver on the back. Yes, I made a mistake. I, I looked at fifty and thought it was fifty-five in the.
Yeah, there would be that little, that little pipe stem still attached.
There would be a little sliver that didn't amount to much of anything. And then when we looked at the parking that was required to provide for three parking spaces, because even if you have a single-family dwelling, typically you're at two or three parking spaces required for a two-family dwelling or a
And under, under ordinance, you need two.
And so what we chose to do was split the difference and make it so that there was an even ten-foot spot so that you could have a parking spot for the smaller lot. And then, and it also helped balance the, the lot areas. That was the rationale behind it.
And you're providing for more housing, more units. Am I correct? Creating more housing.
That, that's in there too. We were doing, the applicant was looking for two, two-family dwellings. And that was the balance to get them.
Okay, can you explain that again? Cause Donna hit exactly what I was trying to get at, but she does a much better job. So can you, so that property line, you're saying you tried to move it to the right, to the west. And then you had a slither in the back where that fourth parking spot is straight, straight in from the driveway?
Yeah, and it's useless property to, uh, uh, to either property owner with that little sliver there. So what we decided to do was slide the common property line further east so that at least the, the sliver of land was ten foot wide and would be usable.
But if you ma- if you moved it over, you're saying that you would have a conforming two, two-family ha- unit or two-family, um, lot, and then you'd have a single family, right, Donna? So one variation on this theme is you could have a conforming two-family on five thousand square feet. That's two, three point zero two. That would be three point zero two effectively. And then the remaining land area would be, yes, this little like five foot wide pipe stem where that fourth parking space is along the rear lot line. Uh, and, and whatever's left to the west. Now, that would be significantly, um, undersized for a two-family house, but it would be actually a little oversized for a single-family dwelling. And a single-family dwelling under the ordinance would only be required to provide two parking spaces, which are easily accommodated in the back of the building that's shown. Um, and if it were conforming again for, um, FAR, it would only need to be, it would be an eighteen hundred and fifty square foot dwelling. Instead of twenty-five? Well, twenty-four hundred for two, so twelve hundred each. But an eighteen hundred and fifty square foot, single-family dwelling is pretty, pretty good sized house. Um, and so it would be a smaller footprint than is currently shown on three point oh one. So you'd have a little bit more, you know, cushion between the parking spaces and the building. Um, and you would have a little bit of green space against the parking, uh, along that side rear lot line. Um, yeah, it doesn't benefit three point oh one, it benefits three point oh two effectively. But the point is, so there is a conforming configuration. I understand the rationale for doing the configuration to do two, two families. I was hoping for some input on why two, two families.
Am I correct, Bruce? Sure. Within a transitional area where you're going from multi to
I don't know what that means because the ordinance doesn't talk about that.
You, you did in your report, you mentioned the transitional area. You say in your report.
From a, I'm sorry, hang on.
Yeah, you say it on page one of the report. The block is a transitional area between the higher density and multifamily use in the southwest and single families.
Geographically, yes, it's a transition area. I'm sorry. Uh, but as a planning, um, requirement, uh, you know, there's nothing in the master plan that talks about transitional areas. There's nothing in the land development regulations that talks about how the R three or the R two or the R one is a transitional area. Uh, geographically, yeah, there's a transition between the, you know, industrial and the commercial and the other higher density and then the higher density in Lincoln Village. But along this block front, I mean, there's, there's a multifamily on the corner. Then there's the very small, tiny, single-family house that's kind of suited to its little tiny, you know, lot. And then we have this larger lot. And so, you know, my mind, it's like, well, you know, there's almost a rhythm we got here, a big house, little house, big house, maybe little house. You know, and then this, you know, other building that's not really, you know, it's one of those community, uh, type of buildings. It's not a residence. So, um, you know, these are options. These are, you know, things that are to be considered and I, I'm just looking for what was the rationale behind two, two families instead of a two, conforming two-family and a conforming single-family.
Bruce, if you were to look at where the, uh, the one lot is three point oh one. If that was a single family, you would have a commercial building to the west. Am I correct?
It's community building.
A, a community building.
Community building. You would have a two-family to the east, correct?
Correct.
Multifamily to the back. Am I correct?
Correct.
And to the north, you would also have multifamily. That's what's been erected there, approved?
That's correct.
And a single-family dwelling to the east of the two-family.
Right, and then further to the east, you have multifamily again. Am I correct?
Right.
So you have mostly, aside from that one single family, multifamily or a community center on that entire block. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Well, and the existing structure, which was a single-family dwelling.
Which is being removed, correct? Uh, and being removed with a two-family, correct?
That's correct.
And replacing the two fam- so you have what's going to be around the entire area or the, this entire building surrounded by either a community center or multifamily, correct?
Well, isn't there one?
Let me finish. Would it make sense then to put a one-family or a two-family and also creating more residential housing then on, in this area? Modern residential housing.
That would be, that would, that would fit into the rhythm of what's going on in the neighborhood.
Is the house across the street multifamily? The gray one that's next to the big empty lot?
I'm not sure.
There's a huge multifamily that's going up across the street then.
That's actually on the corner. It's on the corner, the vacant lot. There's a house that's right next, right across the street from this one. There's one door, but it looks like there are two mailboxes. I don't know. But anyways, just to throw that in the analysis.
If it has two mailboxes, the likelihood is it's multifamily or it's a two-family.
Well, right, but. And it's on the larger lot. Just throw that in there. Donna, um, what, since we haven't seen the plans for that planning, uh, the planning board that approved that, what is exactly going in across the street? So at the corner of Memorial and Cookman, um, is, uh, let's see, I'm just thinking, so that's the southern building. So there's, it's a project involving two buildings. One is, um, on the block between Cookman and Madison and the other's Madison and Bangs. Fronting on Memorial Drive and they're multifamily buildings with commercial on the ground floor with, um, fronting on Memorial. And then, um, on the side streets are covered parking. So it's one-story covered parking. Um, it would be the lot, um, facing the lot four of, you know, the east, the house on the east side of, of this property. Um, and then, uh, the building that's on the frontage of Memorial is four stories, I think. And then the, the other block is five stories. Okay, thank you.
We did approve, um, plans for those two lots years ago.
They just approved it in January, Dan.
No, I mean, previously to those, we had approved another set of plans for that.
We did, Dan, yes. Um, that's, the addresses are two oh one and three oh one Memorial Drive. And we did see a proposal and we did approve a proposal for two oh one Memorial years ago. Um, since that time, it's my understanding that that area of Memorial has been re-designated and that's why it went to the planning board and was taken away from the zoning board. But it has gone through a, uh, various iterations and what has been proposed. Um, I will confirm what Donna was saying. It's a, it's a four and, uh, five-story, rather large multifamily uh, construction and it does have parking and retail and it's a rather big proposal, whether or not
Hundred and twenty units or something.
Yeah, it's certainly over a hundred units. Now, just because it has approval doesn't mean that it's going to get a shovel on the ground and get built, but it has been approved.
I just remember it's approved in both of those years ago.
Uh, yes, we did approve it, but it was taken away from us and the, and the planning board has been, uh, having mini bites at, at that apple over the past couple of years.
No problem. No problem at all.
Yeah, fingers crossed this one's going to move forward. We're fighting with the county right now because they don't want us to have, uh, certain types of, uh, streetscape improvements along Memorial.
Um, Donna, is there anything else that you would like to add right now?
So, okay, so that's the, um, lot configuration, the building configuration. Part of the planning testimony. Jason's pretty much covered all stormwater and the parking thing. Um, yeah, I guess that, um, that does it for me. Unless anybody has questions for, for me.
Does anyone have any questions for Donna? Any board members have, want to follow up on anything that's just been discussed? We're all good. Then let's, uh, move to public for, uh, Mr. Jacobs' testimony. Do we have anyone in the public who wants to ask Mr. Jacobs any questions based on his testimony?
Uh, Yvonne has her hand up, so it's her. She's up now.
Hi, yes. Uh, just two questions. Um, the first one is are you removing all the trees at the back of the lot to accommodate the parking?
Yes.
Question number one. Um, question number two is I understand that there's going to be a wooden stockade fence at the back of the property. What are you proposing on the east and the west sides of the property? I see shrubs toward the back, but I don't understand what's going to be in the front.
On the west side of the property, there's an existing, uh, six-foot vinyl fence. Uh, and that will remain. On the west or, or, uh, excuse me, on the east property line, there's an existing chain link fence and we're going to replace it with a, uh, with a, uh, the wood fence.
Okay.
And we're going to go along the, uh, along the, uh, pay, uh, the concrete of it so that it doesn't cut across. It'll go the, it'll match the easement.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Think you have it confused. The chain link fence is on the west side of the property and the vinyl fence is on the east side.
Correct.
There's an existing vinyl fence on the, uh, along the, uh, the lodge there.
Yes, there is.
And that's the one I'm referring to.
All right, so what are you going to do on the east side?
We, we can, we can add a wooden fence there.
We were proposing, we were proposing a wooden fence, uh, at the rear of the site along the side property line. But we weren't proposing any fence to go all the way along the, between the house and the driveway. We weren't proposing any fence there.
We can now.
Okay, are you proposing any kind of barrier between?
Between the house or between the driveway, uh, the parking area?
Um, between the driveway and the, the property line. Oh.
The driveway is going to be, there's going to be a fence to block off our proposed driveway from the adjoining property owner.
No, 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 no. Well, uh, I think what we're talking about, you're talking about the eastern property line where the, where the easement is.
Yes.
Is anything proposed over there, Bruce?
No.
We're talking about the, the driveway on the east with the adjacent property lot four with the easement in there.
I wasn't proposing anything. I mean, you could, but it's only four feet wide between the house and the driveway.
But we're not opposed to it. We could do that.
Okay, just a question. Thank you.
If, if there's a preference for that, we're fine with that.
All right, thank you. That, that was it for me.
Thank you, Yvonne. Are there any other members of the public that have any questions for Mr. Jacobs?
Uh, not at this time.
All right. Um, Mr. Karis?
Um, I'll be brief. Um, I think we presented a very good application tonight. Um, we have two buildings that are sister buildings that appropriate for the area we're in. Uh, taking down a house that's, uh, very close to the adjacent lot of Yvonne's house on lot four. And I think we're creating two beautiful houses to really help the area, help the neighborhood, what you're seeing a lot of development over there. I think two, two families are appropriate when you take into account what is existing within the neighborhood and the development that likely will go up and that is being proposed. Um, architecturally, we're willing to do things with the, uh, that front roof over the porch, um, to make it more appealing. I think there were some good suggestions and comments with regard to that. It is a modern take on a Victorian colonial type building. Um, I think it's tough to just go in the past and try to replicate the past. I think it makes sense to upgrade and try to create some new, uh, designs with taking it or taking into account the historical perspective of what is in the area. I, I think it fits within the area. It's an upgrade. You're creating additional housing and I think it's a good thing. We're starting to see some nice development that's taking place on the west side. We've always seen it on the east side, but now it's starting to move west. And I really think this is part of now seeing that. And it's a huge benefit to start seeing uh, upgrades to certain areas and starting to see some nice development. Um, with that said, I would, uh, urge the board to approve this application, um, that we're, that we've presented tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, I guess now we can move to public comment about this application.
Sure.
This is the time now for the public to be making any comments and for or against this application. Any statements that you'd like to make?
Okay, we have Yvonne up again.
Yvonne? Yes, um.
It's Jack. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, let's, uh, you're going to actually testify in, in addition. So I can't see you, but I, I believe you if you tell me you're going to raise your right hand. And you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name and your address, please.
Yvonne Clayton, 908 Cookman Avenue.
And you are actually the owner of lot four next to this property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we have a point of reference. Go right ahead.
Okay, I am in favor of the project and I support it going forward. But I do agree with the flat roof. I think it should have somewhat of a pitch over the porch. And, and I, I also support the board in recommending that. Uh, I do want to see what is going to be proposed for the separation between our properties. And, um, I've had some discussion with the owner of the property in the past. And I, I want to thank him for taking into consideration, um, some of my recommendations and concerns. And that is my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just respond, um, whatever is going to be proposed or whatever, um, can be proposed on between the two, I will work with Yvonne. Um, we're not going to put anything up until we work with her to make sure it's something that she wants.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Harris. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a statement or testify at this point?
It appears not, no.
Okay, then I, uh, would like to move, uh, to close public comments, uh, and have the board discuss this at this point.
You have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the eyes have it.
Hey Andrew, would you mind just unsharing your screen? We're still looking at the, uh, survey. The, uh.
I'm trying to figure out how to do that stop share. Okay.
Great, thanks.
You got it.
Okay, board.
All right, board. Um, what are y'all feeling? Talk to me.
I think, I think they're, uh, I think they're really well planned for the neighborhood. Like I said, having a four square colonial, which is very historical with modern touches kind of blends the neighborhood to what is happening. I mean, the only constant is change, right? So you, you need to have change. You need to move forward, but I like that a lot of the, um, architectural details from the past what we're kept.
All right. Thanks, Bonnie. Anyone else?
Yeah, the fact that Ms. Clayton is in agreement with it is very important to me because she represents the neighborhood. And anytime somebody comes into the neighborhood with the change, people who live in the neighborhood should be taken into consideration. So her input is very important to me personally. Um, the one thing I do question is the removal of the shrubbery. Will that affect the amount of absorption of water around the property, which will lead to flooding in the basement? That I'm not sure of, and, but I'm quite sure you've worked it out. But I know this is no time to be asking those questions, but it is an up, there is an upgrade in the, in the neighborhood. So I have no problem with it.
All right. Thanks, Danny.
I agree with, with Mr. Harris. I mean, it's just an upgrade for the neighborhood. Uh, I mean, I, I'm sure it would look beautiful. Just about it.
All right. Thanks, Christopher. Anyone else? Jill, you have any comments?
I think that with the concessions of pitching the roof, um, taking the next door neighbor into consideration, it's a great improvement to the neighborhood.
All right. Catherine?
No, I'll just echo what everyone else said. Thank you.
All right. Brittany? Tim?
I'm good. I agree with Dan.
All right.
Yeah. I know I'm torn on this one because I really don't know if they've proven the hardship and Donna really said what I was trying to get out the whole night. Um, I don't know if they could actually redo the property lines so that a two family and one family could be there. Because I see that and I see no backyard for people to be in. It's just all pavement and development. And I understand that the, you know, across the street, there could be a possibility of a huge development. Um, I mean, the stormwater, I guess we have to, I, I trust Jason to work with the applicant to get the stormwater numbers down. But I, you know, I'm, we've only seen one, one storm that it's built to, and that's not comforting to me, but I also worry about the turning radius. But again, I trust Ja- Jason will, you know, not approve it. It'll come back to us if it's not in his eyes safe.
Okay. Um, I, I am leaning towards being in favor of this project as presented. In considering the, the building coverage and the lot coverage, they're minimal asks, um, and FAR. Um, I, I really appreciate the fact that the new structure is going to be moving over considerably and relieving of an issue and a problem with, uh, Yvonne's property. I, of course, um, really appreciate Yvonne's testimony and the fact that she is, uh, in, in line with all of this means a, a great deal. Um, where this, this property to me is in a really unique position and a really unique place in town. Um, and it's surrounded by as much diversity as possible. Um, and while I agree with you, Brittany, that I would, would have liked to have seen them bring something that was a bit more conforming under these, under the situation, under, and considering all of these things. Um, I'm, I'm leaning towards and in favor of this. I would like to see, um, the, the porch roof, uh, conform a little bit. My one question back to, um, the architect is if we are going to be having a pitched roof on that porch, what is the material going to be? Because I'm assuming we're not going to be using some sort of rubber membrane at that point. And you don't, if you can answer that question now, that would be great. If not, um, we can, we can wait on that.
Yeah. So I can, I can answer that. Um, the, the options will be somewhat limited, uh, depending on the pitch. But it's, it's likely going to be, uh, an asphalt shingle if we can get enough pitch or potentially a metal, um, roof. Those would be likely the options.
Um, I think a metal roof would look much better considering that we are having, um, a lot of modern elements going in. Um, so if that, if that could happen, that would be my preference.
Sure. We'll look into that.
All right. Um, how are we going to determine that issue? Is that going to be something that we leave up to our professionals or are we going to? No, no.
Is there a preference that the board has to a metal or an asphalt shingle roof?
Well, if this were, if this were a traditional, uh, approach architecturally, I would say, you know, the shingles would be fine. But considering that we are going to be keeping a large element of the, the modern language, um, I, I think it would be really fantastic to see a metal roof on this project if possible. That's my opinion. Anyone else have any opinion on that?
Let's see if I can help out here. Uh, anyone disagree with that statement?
No. I agree with them. I mean, I've seen metal roofs all the time when we go down to Florida and I'll talk to people and they're very happy with them, you know, and Hurricane Central. So, I mean, there's really no problem with it to move forward.
Any, uh, any other members of the board? Either, do you agree with it or any disagreement?
Doesn't matter if it's metal or not. I mean, it just has to look aesthetic.
Okay. All right. Then sounds like, and let, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like, uh, the rest of the board, uh, has, is either no opinion on it or in agreement with you.
All right. Sounds good. Um.
What I can do here is, let me, let me tell you what, the notes I have, just so if somebody's going, it sounds like the majority of members are in favor of it. And certainly there are a number of conditions that we discussed this evening. Uh, I don't have them all completely refined, but I do think I've touched upon most of them, if not all. Okay. We usually have a condition in there, uh, that will reference Jason's report and compliance with the sections. In this case, there's a lot of them, but in particular, section 17, uh, the rear drive area is going to be extended uh, towards the east. I suppose that is a bit to get closer to that proposed shrub line. Uh, that would be condition, that would be a comment number 17 from Jason's report. And of course, as I do the resolution, I always go over this in detail with Jason and Donna, and I make sure that anything technical or engineering wise, Jason always makes sure that I'm on the right track and that we get what your intent is across. So, uh, the easements, uh, number two would be easements. The deeds are going to, there'll be two sets of easements. One is an easement, uh, for use of the driveway to the, uh, running in favor of the property and property owner on lot four, which would be, uh, Yvonne. And that easement would go with the property. So when and if Yvonne were to sell, the subsequent owner would continue with that easement. Um, there'll be a, the fencing proposed is wood, not vinyl. Uh, there's going to be a fence or screening type of enclosure to the trash and recycling area to the rear of both structures. I want to make sure I got this. There are four units in total, two and two. Is it my understanding, is my understanding correct that you want a trash can and a recycling can or bin, uh, for each of the units?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have that. Uh, we're going to revise, the architect is going to submit revised plans to the board showing a quote pitched roof with metal, uh, surface or metal roofing, uh, over the porch. We're going to also comment and make, uh, make a condition that the rear maneuvering area behind the structure on lot, especially on lot 3.02, uh, is either going to be, they're going to make sure that there's maneuverability acceptable to our standards through Jason. Uh, so it's either going to be worked out between Jason and applicant's engineer that that's going to be either, either, uh, increasing the width of the parking spaces to by a half a foot back there or, uh, doing something else. Uh, uh, that would have got, make sure that we have the proper turning radiuses and the like. And Jason also said there might be a possibility. He has to look into it further, not fly by the seat of his pants, so to speak, this evening. That there may be, it may work as it is now proposed, but that's something that will develop. And we'll make sure that there is proper, uh, turning radiuses back there. One way or the other, a solution will be presented that's acceptable to Jason and engineering standards. Um, shade, uh, we're going to get some shade.
Wait, before you move on to go with the turning races, the stormwater, um, for the two, five.
I didn't get there yet.
Okay.
I'm going to get there. I'm going to get there. Shade tree commission, uh, input on the, uh, street trees, uh, which Mr. Carr said he would be happy to do. Uh, review and input from them. Okay. Understanding the issue of the, of the utility lines and the like. Tax assessor, we need to get approval from the tax assessor of the proposed lot numbers. Uh, sewer connection fees, the, uh, usual, uh, the subdivision is going to be perfected by deeds. All easements, maintenance agreements for whatever proposed underwater, underground structures for handling runoff and the like. They'll all be reviewed, submitted and reviewed to both Jason and I for review. Uh, submission, uh, as per Britney's request of a photometric plan, uh, showing that, uh, exterior lighting will not spill onto any neighbor's properties. Um, the driveway surface will be concrete, not blacktop. The dry, the dry well location, we need to get, and the, and the calculations that you were referring to, Brittany, uh, for the water runoff, I will prepare a condition for that with Jason's input as to the proper language that should be put in there. Um, the turning plan submission and, uh, certainly the pitch roof, if I haven't already mentioned it. And that the applicant is proposing, if they have to, they will put a six foot wooden fence down the property line with a lot four, which is, uh, Yvonne's property. Uh, obviously, if any.
Not, not on the property line because we have.
Down that property, running parallel to that property line.
Correct.
Yeah, it wouldn't be on a property line because that would encroach on the easement.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I get it. I get that. Um, and of course, if it's a six foot wooden fence, it would have to stop at the front setback line because you can't have the six foot fence in the yard. But we all know that. So that would have to be something to be resolved. Um, and that's about 16 or 18 conditions that I've gone over.
Hey, Jack. Uh, this is Donna. Um, there was a question about the overhead utilities, if they could be placed underground. Should we, I think the condition is at least.
That, there was that, that was, that would require them to take the whole street down.
No, no, no. But the service lines to the houses should be underground.
Okay.
The new houses.
Is that part of your resolution? Who's ever going to move it? Is that what the board wants?
Yeah.
That's you, Brittany. Who else? Anyone?
So there was, this is Jill. There was discussion about that. I don't know that we all came to any sort of
Correct.
actual conversation.
My understanding was the discussion had to do with the utility lines running down the street.
That was my understanding of it.
Right. But in our report, we usually recommend that the service lines be also put underground. We understand that's distribution on, along the street frontage. It's certainly too, uh, heavy a lift for two single, two, two family houses to relocate the entire street. But the service lines to the houses should be underground.
That's the board's decision. What's the board's pleasure?
I say underground. You're going for modern.
What about everybody else?
Uh,
You know, there, there, a, a lot of new construction is doing that. I'm seeing that, um, I, I know they do a lot of that out west, mostly because the storms are getting stronger and people are losing power and eventually if everything's underground, then you don't lose electric. But I mean, the, the holes are still above ground and they're not going underground here anytime. So uh, it doesn't, I don't really feel the, I, I don't see it being necessary to put them underground.
But we'll launch the development, at least for the utility company, it would be economically feasible. But for two houses, I don't see it happening. I live on the border of Asbury and Neptune. The approximate, the, um, midtown development is putting up 20 more new houses. And there are 20 already there that was put underground years and years ago. It's not a, just something that we decide. That's something that's decided when a large project is done.
We're just, uh, Danny, we're just talking about the service from the pole going underground to these structures. We're not talking about, yeah, we're not talking about burying the, the service out front. It's just from the pole to the structure.
Yeah, I understand that. I know what you're talking about. I'm cool with it.
Okay.
I, I think it comes to two things, an economic feasibility and whether or not you can even get it done because it's coming off the pole.
Well, you can, you can take it off the pole. Well, you can, you can take it off the pole. They just take it off the pole and they, they just run a conduit down the pole and into the ground. It's, they run it off the pole. That's where they take it from. It's definitely doable. If it's, you know, it is an economic consideration. I'm not leaning towards requiring this. If it's something that can be done, I think it would be advisable. But I don't think it's something that we should require at this point.
Okay, so whoever makes the motion, if they include it, we'll include it. If they don't, I won't. So.
I think what's more important to me is, and I want to throw this open to the board, requiring permeable pavement since we are, since the, you know, impervious coverage is increasing so much. I think that I would be more comfortable with approving this if the pavement could go through instead of just running from this, from the driveway onto the road, in addition to everything from the roof.
If I'm, I mean, concrete is consistent with what you have in the area. And you're also talking about again, two, two family house, it has to be economically feasible to do this. You get to the point where, you know, economically, it just doesn't make sense.
Do you know how much they are? How much?
They're a lot. Let's not get into economics.
Yeah, let's not get into that.
The basis for variances, that's absolutely.
So he can't use that then against?
Is there anyone?
We don't know the engineering details either yet. Jason hasn't come to a determination on the water runoff, if, if what's being proposed is sufficient or if what's going to be, he suggests is, is, is not going to be accepted. If Jason comes in with something that says, his recommendation is, is that what's being proposed? The numbers don't make sense for water runoff and there has to be additional solutions. And the applicant through the engineer does not come to a consensus with Jason as to what's going to be done. It's coming back to us because there'll be a standoff on that issue.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. But regardless, by subdividing the lots and allowing more building coverage, which is one of the variances that there, we would be granting them, I think it's.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I think it's, yeah.
Well, it's up to the board to agree or disagree with you, not me. That's not, that's.
Sorry, I'm not intending to be fine with you. I'm just.
No, 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 it's not.
Your area.
I get you.
Other board members, do you have a point of view or a position about what Brittany is proposing?
So this is Jill. I would like to see what Jason comes up with once he reviews and have it come back to us if the runoff and water handling is problematic. I don't see a need to force the different concrete structure at this point. Brittany, you have a very valid point and I want to support that, but I'd like to see the actual report from Jason when, when they compare it.
Anyone else have any input?
Okay, does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion? And did I cover all the points? Did I miss anything?
I think you covered everything, Jack, as far as I can tell.
Okay. All right, so then I need a motion from the board.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion and we approve it with all the changes that the attorney has proposed.
I'll second. With, with the conditions.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, I will call the roll. We have.
Yes. In that motion, unless I missed something here, what are we doing about the service lines?
It's not part of it.
Not part of it. Okay.
Everybody added that in.
And, and the.
Unless I'm, Dan, it's your, it's your, it's your motion. And Russell, Russell, you seconded. You did not add in a requirement regarding an underground construction of the service line from the pole to the house. Okay.
No, I do not.
I did not either. I'd like, I'd like to see it, but I'm not requiring it.
Okay, that's fine. So we have eight members.
One more thing. The permeable pavement, what I heard was the applicant is going to submit additional information. And if it, if it creates a runoff, what do we do at that point? Are we coming back to the board?
If you, if you can't resolve the runoff issue with the applicant's engineer to your satisfaction and accepted engineering standards, then you got to come, then the applicant's got to come back because then the board has to hear both sides and make a decision as to what they want to do.
I'm clear. Thank you.
Mr. Caris, did I characterize that correctly?
Just so I'm clear. So if there is a drainage issue that can't be resolved, then it comes back.
Absolutely.
And Jason, when we say drainage issue, it's that.
I'm sorry.
What is it exactly, though? Is it that it's not producing more than?
You want to watch?
Yes. What, what I'm going to be looking for is that the two, ten and hundred year storm and twenty five, since they have it, that they all have less runoff than in the existing condition.
Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Since we have. I'm sorry?
It was just Russell.
Okay, I thought I missed something. Okay. We have eight members in attendance and only seven are authorized to vote because that's our, that's our standard membership. We have two alternates, both Catherine and Bonnie. Bonnie is first alternate, so she would be the seventh vote out of the eight. Catherine was allowed to speak about the project, give input and so on, which was valuable, but she wouldn't be voting on this. So with that, let's get this correctly. Okay, Dan Harris.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Bonnie Knock.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Motion passes, application approved, seven to zero.
Jack, I might have missed something else. I, I should have asked a second ago. And you can smack me next time you see me if I missed this.
No, that's okay.
The, the roof.
I can't reach.
That's by design. The roof, how are we resolving that?
I already said there's a condition that the roof is going to be pitched and it's going to be metal surface.
So who is going to look at it and say it meets that condition?
Well, that doesn't matter to me. Who says it? I'll let you look at it.
I mean, yeah, we're, we're the ones that are doing the resolution compliance.
Then you would be the person to look at it.
That's fine. Maybe what I could do is bounce it off of Russell just to make sure that as acting chair on this one, he's satisfied with it also. It's an aesthetic thing. I mean, a slope is a slope, metal is metal. I, I could say, yes, it's sloped and metal. I just want to make sure that.
No problem. That's fine.
Excellent. We're talking about the porch area, correct?
Absolutely. That's it. Limited to the front porch.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jason? Anything else? No, okay. Okay, then that's it. The matter's been approved. We've got the conditions. We'll sit down and hammer out a resolution and go from there.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. And this is an incredible evening that we started an application and ended it and got to a vote in one night.
It may be my first.
It may be my first, and I've been here for fourteen, fifteen years. So if there's no other matters to address, can I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
You opposed?
Good night, everyone.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.